Isn't this amazing? Look at this nowadays.
Oh, baby.
Shafiq, today, oh my lord, Shafiq. Oh, 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 my goodness. Where's my tablet? Just sit on it. Shafiq, that's so sweet. That's much better. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. We're going to start in just a couple moments.
So we said he was coming, but no one has seen him yet. So we will think, I believe that if they said he was coming, he probably is having something. Early in the morning. We're going to be here for a minute. I mean, if they have to, they're turning the lights back up. Say, say into the mic, can you turn the lights back up?
Can we turn the lights back up for a moment until I make a few comments? Thank you. Okay, good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the Baltimore County Planning Board hearing on the 2024 CZMP rezoning request within the 5th District. My name is Nancy Hafford. I'm the Chair of the Planning Board, and we will start with an introduction of our fellow Board members. We'll start to my left at the far end. Kathy Wolfson, appointee District 4.
Todd Warren, appointee District 1. Howard Perlow, County Executive Appointment.
Derek Johnson, County Executive Appointment.
Scott Alupka, County Executive Appointment.
I think we better stand in cap. We don't have, I need it down.
Shafiq Hinton, County Executive Appointment.
Mark Heckman, District 2 Appointment.
Bev German, County Council Appointment, District 5.
Emily Brophy, County Executive.
Peter Aray, District 6 Appointment.
Thank you. We ask you for your assistance, cooperation, and respect during this hearing. The speakers that have signed up will be given a total of two minutes. There's over 100 speakers signed up for this evening, so please be respectful of the two minutes and present your position on any of the issues in District 5. If you wish to speak and have not signed up, please do so right now. Registration is closing soon. Staff from the Department of Planning will call up three speakers at a time. It's very important when you hear your name, you please come to the front of the room in respect for time and have your seat near the podium. Please begin by clearly stating your name, very important, the issue number that you are speaking on, and how you feel about this issue. Are you in favor or opposed? Because if you just start talking, we won't understand if you're against it or for it. So please be sure, issue number, and if you're for it or against it. We ask that the audience refrains from making any comments or gestures, negative or positive, when someone's speaking, or displays of any kind. But let me let you know, if you feel the same way and you want to stand up and say, "I support the way that person's speaking," we will count you as if you spoke. We understand that you feel the same way. The Planning Board will utilize a visual electronic timer for the speakers. This will help you utilize your two minutes efficiently. And we want to make sure we have enough time for all the people that have signed up to speak in front of the Planning Board. Everyone registered will be given an opportunity to speak, but however, if you're saying the same thing over and over again, we can limit that. So if you stand, it counts. Sometimes we've had people come up and just say, "I want to let you know on this issue, I would agree with the previous speakers," and we hear that. Following the completion of the seven hearings we have this February, next week is the last round of hearings, the Planning Board will review the issues and the information, the comments that were made, and any written testimony that you've sent in. Following that, the County Council, the County Council will hold its own public hearings in June, that's required by code, and they will vote on the new zoning maps before September. Again, thank you for your attendance, your cooperation, and your respect, not just for us, but for everyone here in the room. Again, remember, clearly state your name, the issue number, whether you're for it or against it, before you start your testimony. Thank you all for coming. Ms. Benzley, first three speakers.
Thank you, Madam Chair. First up, we have Joan Garrity, followed by Michael Thomas, and then Jonathan Miller.
This is for a taller person than I am. Can we bring this down? You can hear me? Okay, great, thank you. My name is Miriam Joan Garrity, Joan Garrity. I am a resident of the Honeygill Ridge Community off Philadelphia Road. I've lived there for 23 years with my husband, Colin Chow, and we are for the change of that issue that has been designated 5-063 to make it CB, which means what would be permitted is a limited, small, commercial business serving daily needs. That area is very close to our home. Considering serving daily needs, it would be wonderful if it were a childcare facility, especially in light of our booming residential area. I also want to be absolutely certain that whatever appropriate and needed small business does not in any way threaten the health or well-being of the residents of White Marsh or negatively impact the environment, including the native flora and fauna of our beautiful area. I very much appreciate the opportunity to speak and give my input on this important decision. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Hold your pause, please. Thank you.
Next up, we have Michael Thomas, followed by Jonathan Miller, and then Kathleen Ward.
Sir.
Good evening. My name is Michael Thomas. I'm providing testimony regarding issue 5063 or 11543. I'd like to note that I am in favor for changing this property zoning to CB. I'll tell you all about it. I've lived in the Honeygill Ridge neighborhood, similar to Joan, for over 12 years. I'm a husband, a proud father of four children. I've established my friendships in the community, many of whom are here with me tonight, as you may see. I'm also the President of the Honeygill Ridge Homeowners Association. Our neighborhood sits adjacent to the property along Philadelphia Road and is roughly 500 feet away. I drive past it every day on my daily outings. As you can imagine, this property and this issue means a lot to us. Our area has changed dramatically these past few years. It looks very different today than when I moved in 12 years ago. As many of us all know, there's been a significant increase in development up and down the Philadelphia Road Corridor. Unfortunately, I've noticed a change where much of this new development is not necessarily harmonious with the surrounding communities. We're seeing businesses or plans for businesses that do not benefit our community directly, such as reclamation centers, freight companies, even crematoriums. I have not participated in public discussions regarding our neighborhood and its development for far too long. I believe if we want something to change, we have to try to make that change. I can no longer sit idle as people who do not have my community or my personal best interest in mind make decisions that will change my family and my community's lives for a lifetime. With this in mind, and as this property is currently empty, I'd like to request the Council to change the current BL and BR zoning to Community Business, or CB. It is my belief that a CB zoning code will foster an environment that encourages businesses to build a future establishment that is more complementary to the daily lives of the local residents. Such ideas could be maybe a small restaurant.
Thank you, sir.
I'm out of time. All right. Thank you for listening.
Thank you for your time, sir.
Jonathan Miller.
Referring from clapping, thank you. Your standing, we get, it would get you feel the same way. Thank you, sir.
Jonathan Miller, followed by Kathleen Ward and Joan Grabowski.
Hello, I'm John Miller. I live at 9116 Calhoun Avenue. This is regarding issue 5080. I would be against any change in the zoning on that property, which states it's a wooded area between 9116 and an address on Rexus Avenue they're adjoining. I'm against any change for that. My half of this property is mostly open grassy areas. It's not a wooded area, with some wooded area all the way in the rear at the stream. So a lot of the issues here tonight are requests for allowing special uses, or up zoning, or even against special uses. I'm not asking for any of those things. I'm just asking for the existing zoning to remain in place. Recently, on Calhoun and Joppa, there's been hundreds of homes, apartments, stores, restaurants, and a large landfill has been built. All of this stuff was built within the rules and regulations set forth by the county agencies. I'm sure anything that would be built at 9116 would also be built with those regulations in mind. It makes me wonder why all of this development has been allowed, but my small area is all of a sudden in question. Again, I'm not asking for special treatment, but this is a growth area meant to slow the sprawl into the county. I'm just asking you to please leave the existing zoning in place. Thanks for your consideration.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker, please.
Next up, we have Kathleen Ward, followed by Joan Grabowski and Wendy Ingles.
Hi, my name is Kathleen Ward, and I'm a resident of 4013 Silvage Road. The issue at hand is 5-145. I've lived in my property with my spouse for the last 20 years. It is a residential cul-de-sac, a small community. I am opposing the creation of an assisted living facility at the top of our street. That's where the children get on the school buses. It would increase the traffic. It would increase mobility buses, ambulances within our cul-de-sac. It cannot support the structure. Also, I've worked in healthcare for the last 37 years of my life. Despite not wanting it to be a business, healthcare is a business. We are a residential community. We are not set up for a business of any sort, and an assisted living, no matter how you look at it, is fee for service, and it's a business. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
I oppose.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Joan Grabowski, followed by Wendy Ingles and Catherine.
Catherine Allen.
Good evening. My name is Edith Grabowski. I speak for myself and my sister Joan Grabowski.
I'm going to sit down.
The issue we're discussing is 5144, and we would like to maintain the current zoning. That would be, it's shown on the form you sent us as existing and current the same. Our property is described as farmland and located at 7017 Grace's Quarters, south of Grace's Quarters and east of Freedom Court. There are mixed zoning designations in place for our parcels of property. The property has been in continuous agricultural use since before our family bought the original farm a little over 100 years ago. Currently, there is an agricultural use plan on file with the Maryland Department of Agriculture. Our acreage has been significantly reduced for the public good at least three times. Once for the development of the Hammerman area of the Gunpowder Park, twice for road construction projects, including the elimination of the at-grade Ebenezer Road Railroad crossing. Between 1/3rd and 1/2 of our current acreage, all of which is taxable, is unsuitable for either residential or agricultural use by virtue of proximity to the tidal Dundee Creek and its adjacent wetlands. A small portion of the property currently zoned for residential use at least provides some additional options for our children and their heirs. I appreciate you letting me speak to you this evening. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Wendy Ingles, followed by Catherine Allen and Mark Huff.
Good evening. My name is Wendy Ingles, and I'm a resident of Silvage Road. I'm speaking in opposition to issue 5-145, a proposed assisted living center at 4026 Silvage Road. I've lived on this cul-de-sac for 18 years with my family. An assisted living center is a business which is not compatible with the residential neighborhood. The proposed business is located at the intersection of two cul-de-sacs off of a side street with no through streets or sidewalks. There's only one way in and one way out of our street, and the reality of an assisted living facility is that ambulances and other emergency vehicles are present on a regular basis. The neighborhood's not designed for the increase in traffic, such as ambulances, other patient transport, delivery vehicles, staff, and visitors. These are all associated with an assisted living facility regardless of the size. The property does not have adequate parking as currently zoned, and delivery area for these vehicles is also not present. Increased street parking poses potential dangers for the pedestrians, it's a very walkable neighborhood, and the other vehicles. Increased parking on the property will have a negative effect on the surrounding properties. It's located across the street from the bus stop used by students from all three levels of schools in the neighborhood. The bus drivers already make interesting turns and back into Silvage Road and back out in order to pick up and drop off their students. Additional traffic and parked vehicles on the road will make this more dangerous for the drivers and our neighborhood children walking to and from school. I respect the property owner's desire to provide a small facility. However, this location's not compatible with in our neighborhood. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Next up, we have Catherine Allen, followed by Mark Huff and Matt Carter. Catherine? Okay, great.
Hi, my name is Catherine Allen, and I am opposed to 5-019 being rezoned from DR2H to ML. I am for issue 5063 being rezoned to CB. I live on Carrington Drive, which is right off of Route 7, and the reason I signed up to speak tonight is I believe that the Route 7 corridor north of Ebenezer Road is still a primarily residential area, and I feel we need to do everything we can to protect the integrity of that residential status. I have concerns about the trends to move towards businesses and industrial along the corridor. I have concerns about the infrastructure along the corridor. The roads are just cannot handle, most of the road does not even have a shoulder, and to continue to put industrial, large industrial things there, I just feel is very unsafe. I would like to see issue 063 rezoned to CB, so we can have a small community business there. And issue 5019, I am concerned that if that is rezoned to ML, even though my understanding as of right now, it is the resident that just wants to run something small there, but if it's ML, we have no control over the future, and that is right by the Joppa Road intersection, which is already a very dangerous intersection to drive if you're coming off of there, which many people are bringing their children home from school and turning onto Route 7. So that is where I stand on those issues. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Mark Huff, followed by Matt Carter and James Dam.
Good evening. My name is Mark Huff. I represent the 32 families located in the Saddle Brook Community off of Philadelphia Road and Holter Road. I am in favor of 5.063 and opposed to 5-019. My wife and I moved out here 25 years ago to raise a family, and we managed to do so. Our children both went through the local schools. My daughter, very proud of my daughter, she's now a nurse at Stanford Hospital, and my son is finishing up his last year as an engineer at University of Maryland. During that 25 years, traffic and congestion along the Philadelphia Road Corridor has gotten horrible, especially in the last five years. There's dirt and mud coming out of the reclamation center, coming out of the new place at Devence's Auto Place. You can't even, if your car's clean, you can't even take it out and drive it. The bottom line is, we've missed many opportunities to help this community through this process, and this is a great community, a great chance for us to fix a wrong. We don't, we, what we need to do is have community business located on Philadelphia Road, not crematories and funeral homes and other things that are just add additional traffic to that corridor. That's what makes sense for the community, because the community is in need. We're in need of green space and local business. As far as the other property rezoning that, this is a landowner who right now doesn't honor his current zoning. If you go up to this house tonight, there are commercial vehicles, there are trailers, there are piles and piles of construction equipment, there are, there are dump trucks, you name it, it's been there. This place has been under construction for 20 years and nothing changes. What are we going to do? Now we're going to reward him for being a bad person in our community and say, hey, now you can park all this stuff there with no recourse. That's exactly what we don't want to do. So again, thank you very much for your time. All I'm asking is take a common sense approach to our community and help us to help our community. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Matt Carter, followed by James Dam and Heather Patty.
Good evening. My name is Matt Carter, and I'm here to speak in opposition to issues 5-004 and 5-123. I'm Vice President and General Counsel of LMC Properties. We are the real estate subsidiary of Lockheed Martin Corporation, and our property is located at 103 Chesapeake Park Plaza. In sum, both the issues filed would request significant downzoning of our property, which would negatively impact any future redevelopment or investment in the community. We're currently working with a developer to redevelop a number of the parcels into flexible mixed-use industrial facilities, and they would be leased out to end users, which may include commercial, industrial, or manufacturing uses. And Lockheed Martin has been a great partner to the community over the years. Our history goes back over 100 years with Glen El Martin, and we believe that our plans for the property has taken into account all stakeholders and could be an economic engine for commercial investment in the area. The developments could bring in excess of 150 temporary construction jobs and more than 200 permanent jobs to the site across all of the parcels. Parcel B, which is the one out on the main road there, is the most important one that's related to issue 5-123, and that would be the driver to bring further investment to the site, because that is the most, will deliver the most economic impact. Industrial zoning is also consistent with everything around that area. We have Middle River Aerostructures, we have Johnson Towers, Tilly Chemical. We recently celebrated the ribbon cutting of the Rocket Lab facility, which they lease from us, and we have numerous other industrial users interested. Allowing us development under industrial standards would bring a congruent component element that would attract further businesses and manufacturing uses to the site. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker.
James Dam, followed by Heather Patty and Suzanne Fornow.
Hi, good evening. My name is James Dam. I'm Lockheed Martin's Senior Real Estate Manager. I'm here because I'm opposed to issue 5-004 and 5-123, which is the downzoning of Lockheed Martin's property. The reason we feel the property should remain industrial is because it's been zoned industrial for 100 years. There's currently 2 million square feet of industrial space already there, and the parcels that we are redeveloping have been remediated to industrial standards. The developer that we're working with also is aware of the community's issues and they're willing to work with them. Also, Lockheed Martin is in the process of donating a park to Baltimore County, which will be in dedication to Rosie the Riveter, and the park will be used by the local community so they can enjoy perfect views of the water. In closing, Lockheed Martin has been and will continue to be a great community partner. We've been a part of this community for over 100 years. We take every stakeholder's concerns into consideration, and we believe development plans will be an economic engine for commercial investment, job creation, and a tax-based growth for many years to come. Thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker.
Heather Patty, followed by Suzanne Fornow and Melissa McKenzie.
Hello, members of the Planning Board.
Hello, members of the Planning Board. My name is Heather Paddy. I am representing the White Marsh-Cowington Community Association. We represent approximately thirty-five hundred households in White Marsh 21162. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Should I start over?
No, we hear you.
Okay, good. We are supporting the CZMP issues that follow: 5-049, 5-063, 5-095, 5-096, 5-101, 5-102, 5-103, and 5-112. We are opposed to these CZMP issue changes: 5005, 5015, and 5019, based on the proposed changes being incompatible with surrounding zoning classifications and/or causing a negative effect on our right to the quiet enjoyment of our properties. Lastly, we support any zoning changes that will decrease high-density development and protect our waterways. I’m submitting some wording documentation for you to show in favor of what we’re opposed to, the twenty copies as per your instructed, and I also just want to say very quickly that my family moved to the White Marsh-Perry Hall corridor of Joppa Road, Philadelphia Road, in 1974. So for fifty years or so, we’ve been in this area, and we’ve seen a lot of changes that probably shouldn’t have been because the community didn’t get involved, and these issues are very important because our community needs services and businesses that support our daily needs, not the needs of other surrounding areas. That’s all I have. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Suzanne Fornow, followed by Melissa McKenzie and Larry Dur.
Hi, my name’s Suzanne Fornow, and I’m an active member of the White Marsh-Cowington Community Association. I also live in the community of Darrell Gardens that corners Allender Road and Philadelphia Road. I also started a community Facebook page that we have over a hundred and forty members as of this morning, and I am sharing a lot of feedback from our neighbors. We are opposed to Item 5-101. We are opposed to Item 5-015, and we’re in favor of 5-063. These zonings would align with the vast majority of the existing houses in our neighborhood and keep the harmony that currently exists. We are certainly concerned about the traffic concerns and safety that go along the corridor of Philadelphia Road. This is already a high-traffic area. There are very few arteries that go to some of the other roads that are more than a two-lane traffic. The congestion is completely out of control, and a lot of us are having to commute our kids to school because the buses are not on time. The only road there is Joppa and Philadelphia Road, which—that intersection is absolutely hard to get out of. So thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Melissa McKenzie, followed by Larry Dur and Judith Davis.
Hello, good evening. My name is Melissa McKenzie, and I am against Issue Number 5-145. I’d like to share with you a bit of my background. I reside at 4026 Sylvage Road. I have over twenty-five years’ experience in the healthcare field, and I hold a master’s degree in business. With this expertise, I assure you that the assisted living facility will be a positive addition to the neighborhood. I would also like to address a few concerns surrounding the opening of the assisted living located at 4026 Sylvage Road. I understand that safety and security are top priorities for all. Rest assured, stringent measures will be in place to safeguard both the residents of the assisted living and the surrounding community. We will be installing various security hardware and following safety protocol to ensure a safe environment for all. The assisted living facility will also provide a supportive and family environment for its residents. Residents will enjoy a high quality of life without infringing on the serenity of our neighborhood. Our goal is to create—I’m sorry, excuse me. Our goal is to create a space where residents can thrive while maintaining a peaceful environment that drew homeowners like me to this area. I would like to thank you all for your time. I am committed to making sure that the—that my ALF is a positive addition to our neighborhood, and I welcome any questions or concerns you may have. Please feel free to reach out to me, as you did in the beginning when I moved into the neighborhood, and I’ll be happy to address them. Thank you.
Thank you for your time. Next speaker, please.
Larry Dur, followed by Judith Davies and Rebecca Slezak.
Hello, my name is Larry Dur with Issue 5-159. I’m opposed with it as well as the eighteen other residents on this Little Burton Avenue dead-end street. Back in July, we welcomed a new neighbor at 9522 Burton Avenue. In no uncertain terms, they showed us what their plans were right away. For three weeks straight, approximately thirty vehicles were parked out front, out back, in everyone else’s driveway until we had to ask them what was going on. At first, it was a funeral. Then it was one of their parking attendants that they hired told us it was going to be a community center. After calls, the Baltimore County Inspector came out, issued a citation for the gatherings and lack of permits. We had an administrative hearing that was scheduled on WebEx. A fine was issued and forty-five days given to figure out what they wanted to do. The forty-five days came and went. So now, the judge never did make a decision, and it went to the Planning Board. Burton Avenue is a very small street, has a narrow sixteen-foot in places. We have multiple elderly and disabled residents that rely on daily services required to have full access at all times. Baltimore zoning code has set requirements in order to facilitate good traffic circulation, to which the proposed community center would not meet. There are many red flags: emergency vehicle access, current water and sewage system capacities that would put the cost to everyone on that street, plus codes for fire, safety, and health would have to be considered along with the residential transition area. One last thing. When I looked at the zoning page and map, it said it was designed to reduce congestion, prevent overcrowding, and have access to emergency equipment—
Thank you, sir.
—opposed to those. Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Judith Davies, followed by Rebecca Slezak and Thomas Castello.
My name is Judith Davies, and my husband and I live at 9929 Philadelphia Road. We are opposed to the zoning change to MLIM for Issue 5006 for the 3.5-acre property at 1431 Moores Lane and the 19.5-acre property at 1465 Moores Lane. These properties are located across the street from our residence and across Philadelphia Road from the long-established residential community of Nottingham Village. A zoning of MLIM on these properties would allow a large-scale industrial development that is not compatible with the residential nature of the area. The traffic generated by an industrial development would place a burden on the already-stressed Philadelphia Road corridor, since Moores Lane/Campbell Boulevard extension and bridge have not yet been built and will not be finished until 2027 or later. The area already has multiple industrial/flex spaces that are standing empty, such as 387,000 square feet on Franklin Square Drive, thousands of square feet on—that are empty on Route 43, and additionally, the White Marsh Interchange Park is being built on Philadelphia Road with an additional 750,000 square feet of industrial and flex space. I would like to support Issues 5055—excuse me—5057, 5133, and 568, and thank the County Council for proposing the downsizing of hundreds of acres to DR1NC for just low development. And also Issue 5109 for adding over thirty acres of green space to the White Marsh Mall property.
Thank you for your time. Folks, please refrain—stand up if you agree, but please refrain from clapping. Thank you.
After Rebecca, we’ll have Thomas Castello and David Gersmeyer.
Hi, my name is Rebecca Slezak. I’m speaking on Issue 5-014, and I’m opposed to it. I’m a first-time homebuyer and live next door to 10509 Vincent Farm Lane. I purchased my home in 2022 because of the character of the neighborhood and wanting to live in Baltimore County close to my employer and my family. I value and appreciate the quiet and rural neighborhood with one or two homes per acre. Rezoning the property from the existing RC2 and RC3 classifications with one home per acre to DR3.5 would allow for ten homes on this property. This will damage the quality of life for the neighborhood, reduce property value, and increase traffic. According to the U.S. Department of Transportation, Maryland averages two cars per home, and the average home generates ten trips per day with traveling to and from, visitors, deliveries, and trash and recycle services. The roads and elementary school are already crowded with existing development and businesses. Vincent Farm Lane is extremely congested because it is the main road into Richardson Farms Store and Maryland Flower and Foliage. In addition, I do not think the county should remove the RC2 agricultural classification. Once the county loses farmland, it never recovers it. As you know, agriculture is a valuable community asset. Baltimore County should protect their farmlands rather than develop more housing. I’m opposed to high-density development at more than one home per acre. Thank you, I appreciate your time and support in preserving the character of our community.
Thank you for coming out. Next speaker, please.
Thomas Castello, followed by David Gersmeyer and Amy Wheeler.
Good evening. My name is Tom Castello, and I’m a board member of the Forge Reserve Homeowners Association. So we represent a small community subdivision of twenty-nine homes in Perry Hall located off Honeygo Boulevard, homes located on Forge Road, Jordan Way, and Call Creek Court. So I’m going to speak on three issues as quickly as I can. First issue is 5002, and this issue we are in favor of. This is the downzoning to DR1H. Second issue, 5021, this is the upzoning to DR16. We are against that issue, opposed, and these are really one and the same issue. So specifically, at the dead end of Forge Road off of Honeygo Boulevard, Developer Hill Management is proposing sixteen double-stack townhouses for a total of thirty-two additional houses. This is a strip of Forge Road that’s eight hundred feet long. Already has seven houses that have been built by another developer, proposing thirty-two additional houses. So for this reason, in terms of overcrowding, safety encroaching on our neighborhood, again, we are in favor of downzoning 15002, and we are opposed to upzoning 15021. Third issue I’m speaking on tonight is 5-098, and we are in favor of downzoning to DR1H, and specifically, our homes on Jordan Way back up to the wooded area where the Perry Hall Service Center is located off of Bel Air Road. We’ve been in communication with BGE, who owns this service center—the Perry Hall BGE Service Center—for seven years, talking about this issue. They’ve left us with a perpetual unknown situation and has created great stress and anxiety for our community. We’ve been gracious with our time, countless with our hours and meetings, time away from our jobs and families, but enough is enough. So we are in deep opposition to any development in this area. We are recommending downzoning to DR1H. We want a permanent resolution to this situation. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker?
David Gersmeyer, followed by Amy Wheeler and then David Peravano.
Dave Gersmeyer with the Biscayne Bay Village Community Association. We’re looking to change 5126 from BM to CRC8. Traffic and infrastructure consideration for Eastern Avenue, a two-lane road, is the following that affect this area: The Marshy Point Nature Center, Chase Manor Townhouses, Hopkins Point Townhouses, Grace Point Baptist Church, Chase Fire Station, school bus, and MTA stops, and MTA turnaround. A teenager was killed a few years ago crossing the street to the MTA bus on Eastern Avenue at Hopkins Point, which at that time was Whispering Woods. At the BBVCA suggests—our suggestion—the MTA moved the stop so that people did no longer have to cross Eastern Avenue. Environmentally, this property comes in contact with the Lafarge property, which is RC8. We would like to see it to stay in its natural state as woods and marsh. We don’t want to see any more Baltimore County wetlands disappear. Our hope is that the property owner would agree with this request since there aren’t any known plans to go forward. Other considerations: 5078, 5127, 5026, 5116, 5144. The Biscayne Bay Village Community Association is affiliated with the Essex Metropolitan Civic Council, the Police Community Relations Council, the Baltimore County Mobile Homeowners Community Association. Thank you for your time.
Were you in support or opposing all the issues?
I want to change.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Okay, thank you. Okay, sir, that’s—your time’s up. Thank you, then. We appreciate that.
Next up, we have Amy Wheeler, followed by David Peravano and Savannah Weber.
Hi, my name is Amy Wheeler. I am speaking today regarding Issue 5-145. I oppose the current request for rezoning by a new homeowner on my court to change their residential single-family home to an assisted living facility. I have lived on Sylvage Road for twenty-four years. Sylvage Road is a court with only one way in and one way out. I live at 4003 Sylvage in the turnaround circle of this court. There are many, many young children who ride their bikes, scooters, and play on this road and in the court. There is a basketball hoop in the court circle where many children play basketball, and soccer nets on the lawn surrounding the court. An assisted living facility would cause an increased amount of traffic on our court on a daily basis. The only Baltimore County school bus stop for our neighborhood is directly across the street from the house at Issue. Buses can barely turn around now when picking up children and dropping off children from school. An assisted living facility across the street from the bus stop would cause an increase of parked cars, delivery trucks, medical vehicles coming and going, and other vehicles in an area constantly filled with children. The rezoning of this home into an assisted living facility would instantly decrease the value of surrounding homes, a few of which have had the same owners since the 1970s and early 80s and which is their sole asset. Thank you very much for your consideration.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
David Peravano, followed by Savannah Weber and Edward Muzell.
My name is David Peravano, and I am testifying in favor of Issue Number 5019. I am a longtime resident of Perry Hall and have owned this property for thirty years and raised seven children here. I own several adjacent properties located on the west side of Philadelphia Road, just north of its intersection with Joppa Road. I am asking to rezone a portion of one of my properties to ML so that I can park my work vehicles on the site, like I have done for many years. Our company, Domenico Peravano &amp; Sons, has a long-lasting ties in this area. We have done many sidewalks, driveways, et cetera, for the Perry Hall and surrounding areas. Most of Perry Hall residents are familiar with our company and name. Most of Perry Hall residents are familiar with our company and name. This rezoning request is not to build a new building for our business or expand our business in any way. I am simply trying to ensure I can park my work vehicles on my property and remain in compliance with the zoning regulations. We will work with the councilmen to decrease the size of rezoning requests to only the amount required, and making sure the rezoning area is screened as needed for public view. We have plenty of land to make sure there is adequate screening. As a longtime resident and business owner, I would greatly appreciate your support of this issue to rezone a portion of our property to ML, which is the zone directly across the street from our property. Thank you.
Thank you for your time. Next speaker, please.
Savannah Weber, followed by Edward Muzell and Joe Moran. Savannah? Okay. And Savannah is speaker number 21.
Hi, thanks for having me tonight. I am nervous, so I'll probably sound rambly, but I'm here with my neighbors. We all live just off Eastern Avenue about issue number 5-065 and 5-066. We live in an area that consists of about 20 acres, and those 20 acres, 10 are owned by the county. I'm being approximate there. It's actually 8.39. And on the other side, over nine acres is owned by us, and there are six houses there. And right now, there's a proposal to look at development of that area. It's a private road. We don't get trash removal. We don't get snow removal. We don't get mail delivery. In fact, all six of us put our trash in Mr. Frank's driveway every Tuesday, which is across Eastern Avenue from where we actually live. And we've dealt with that. My neighbors have been there, and Ms. Kathy here, and also Ms. Stacy here, they're related to the Beasley family originally, and the original Beasley home on our road was built in 1919. So the thought that it would ever be changed is just absurd and appalling, and it shouldn't have ever even been zoned such a high density that it is now. So that's why we're here in support of David Marks's rezoning of those areas, to have it downzoned, to keep the parkland, the Benji's Walters Parkside, as a park space, and to make that an NC 1, and to rezone our properties as a DR 1, so that way, one house per acre, which is what we already have as it stands. And this would keep the developer from using the one acre that they purchased recently for $48,000, from turning that into, I believe she wants to put, four duplexes, which would be eight units, in a 5.5 zoning area now. So we're all here together to hope that we can find support from you fine people as well.
Thank you. And from now on, only the speaker is allowed to come forward. We appreciate if you stand in your spot, we can see you and we'll recognize you, your support. Thank you so much. Next speaker, Ms. Bensley.
Edward Muzell, followed by Joe Moran and Barbara Kestner.
Good evening, members of the planning board. My name is Edward R. Muzell, Jr. I am here tonight to give testimony on issue 5-081 and request that 1.9 acres of the property go to BR zoning. My family and I are longstanding business owners and property owner in District 5. My father owned both properties that are covered under this issue, 824 and 820 Orms Road. He purchased 824 in the early 60s and 820 in 1996. We have operated a trash removal business contracting with Baltimore County on a portion of 824 property since my purchase, my father's purchase in early 1960. You can see from the operational photographs that we are submitting in my testimony that we use this area to store trucks and equipment associated with the business. Throughout the past 60 years, we have operated a business on this site and always been good neighbors to community and community members. We have strong relationships with the adjacent property owners, and we have never had any complaints or issues that we could not easily resolve. Despite the long-established operations, both properties are zone DR 3.5 with a small portion zoned BL. This current zoning is inconsistent with our historic use of the property, and is very concerning to me and my family as longstanding business operation is not prevented under the current zoning. We have never used the site for residential or light business, nor we do, do we intend to. Councilman Marks filed this issue and did not offer a new zoning for the properties. Because we use this site consistently for over this past 60 years without any major complaints or issues, as a trash removal business, we are requesting that the portion be rezoned BR, and it's roughly 1.9 acres. We have consulted with our neighbors, and the BR zoning would permit our business through a special exemption.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Next speaker, Ms. Bensley.
Joe Moran, followed by Barbara Kestner, and then Mary Oakley.
My name is Joe Moran. I'm speaking in favor of issue number 5024, property located in Perry Hall. Approximately 15 years ago, I saw a need for senior housing in Perry Hall to include independent and assisted living and senior communities. So in 2012, I worked with Councilman Marks, Patrick Keller of the Perry Hall Improvement Association and the community, and with their input, we developed approximately 200 assisted living units in two phases. This project is known as Bright View. It's located at 9657 Bel Air Road. It has been very successful and is currently over 90% occupied. In approximately 2018, we started on the same site and designed a community for 55 or older living, villas with first-floor bedrooms. Again, we worked in cooperation with Councilman Marks, Patrick Keller, and the community to design the site and the product. The project is known as Perry Hall Station. It is now substantially complete and has also been very successful. Sighted issue today is approximately 10 acres located between Gersht Avenue and Magnolia Road, currently zoned DR 1. We're asking to have the zoning rezoned to DR 5.5 so we can pursue high-end, age-restricted villa product. We spent the last two years with the site and design work for this product. Our first plan was 62 units, and we didn't meet the open space requirements. That was potential issue for the community, so we redesigned the project, eliminating 17 units, and are currently proposing 45 units, and we well exceed Baltimore County open space requirements. At a community meeting about a year ago, the issue of access off of Gersht Avenue was brought up by the community, and since that time, we've been working and looking for ways to address that. This is still a needed product of Perry Hall, and the two biggest issues are addressed: no impact on schools and much reduced traffic. We will continue to work with the community and Councilman Marks throughout the process. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker, Ms. Bensley.
Barbara Kestner, followed by Mary Oakley, and then Angela Coleman.
Good evening, members of the planning board. My name is Barb Kestner, and I'm here tonight to give testimony on issue 5-016. I'm requesting that the back portion of my property that is covered by this issue 12932 Eastern Avenue go to BR zoning. Originally, I was asked for ML zoning, but upon a closer look, I realized that BR with a special exception for the storage yard would be the best way to go. The special exception would ensure that the site is being used for this one purpose. My family and I are longstanding small business owners on the 5th district. We have owned and operated B&amp;J Sweeping &amp; Sons since 1979. We contract with communities throughout the county, state, and provide street sweeping services through their neighborhoods. Throughout the last, past four decades, there have been operating our business, that we have been in good, with good, as a good neighbor and community member. My family and I have owned the subject property since 1999 and have operated this site since its purchase. It is currently zoned DR 2. The north side of the property is bordered by vacant land, and south side is bordered by residence. The property is bordered in the rear by the CSX railroad tracks and is directly across the street from the Benji's and Chase Democratic Club Incorporated and its parking lot. Although the property is zoned residential, we only use the front portion of this residential use, which is my father's part-time home. As you can see in the aerial photograph that was provided with my written submittal, we use the back portion of the property adjacent to the railroad tracks to store our street sweeping vehicles and other equipment associated with our business. This area is about one acre and is the portion we are requesting to be changed to the BR zone. The BR zone would allow our storage yard to the special exception process and provide...
Thank you for your time.
So, thanks.
Speakers, remember, when you come up, state your issue and whether you are opposed or supported. We have over 180 issues, so that's very important that you're clear on those two issues, those two items.
Next up, we have Mary, followed by Angela Coleman, and then Tammy Die.
I'm Mary Oakley, here mostly because I'm concerned about issue 5099, and it concerns my property. And I'm in support of the document as it stands, but I was told over the phone via Ms. Pressle that those proposals can change, so I'm opposed to any change to my current zoning, which is another concern for me, is why was this document filed? Because it shows no changes, from what I'm reading, there's no changes proposed for my property, so I'm wondering why it was filed? And if anyone can answer me that?
We're here to listen, ma'am, but sometimes that happens, but we hear you. We heard you.
Okay, well, there were other issues involving David Marks, and I'm concerned of why he filed this.
Okay. We can't, we, we are not here to discuss.
Okay, well, I do want to also comment that I've tried to access the review, the site review plan, and it's usually done by 31st according to the county's timeline, and it's not posted on the issues site. And I was wondering, when is that going to be posted?
We'll check on it. Thank you.
Okay, so I'm, like I said, I'm opposed to any change in the document as it stands, and I want an explanation as to why it was filed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Angela Coleman, followed by Tammy Die, and then Daniel Williams.
Good evening, Madam Chair and members of the planning board. My name is Angela D. Coleman, and I am founder and president of Sisterhood Agenda, a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization which provides education, support, and empowerment for women and children. We have specialized expertise for those who have experienced trauma. Thank you for the opportunity to offer my comments on CZMP issues numbers 5065 and 5066. We respectfully request the planning board to vote to retain the existing zoning for both of these issues. We oppose any zoning changes. Sisterhood Agenda owns a 9.96, excuse me, acre parcel on the west side of Beasley Lane, which is currently zoned DR 5.5. Our property is within the area covered by issue number 5066. For almost two years now, Sisterhood Agenda has been in extensive negotiations with Baltimore County about acquiring the adjacent 8.32 acre and 0.96 acre parcels, both located down the east side of Beasley Lane. These lots are currently owned by Baltimore County and are unimproved. They are both the subject of issue number 5065. Our proposal, which we have openly discussed with various Baltimore County, community, and state of Maryland stakeholders, is to develop the properties with a supportive, holistic, community-based housing development. Although the existing zoning will support almost 60 dwelling units, the proposed development will consist of only 22 units spread amongst nine single-family attached homes. Over more than 10 acres, this equates to less than one home per acre. There will also be onsite gathering areas and a community garden. The majority of the site importantly will be preserved. It will be a preserved ecosystem, open space.
Thank you for your time, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. And the members of the community standing here now, standing Sisterhood Agenda.
Tammy Die, followed by Daniel Williams and Andy Dudak.
Hi, I'm Tammy Die. I live on Sylvage Road, and I oppose issue 5145 for an assistant living center on our street. The house that they are talking about is literally on the corner of Treppet and Sylvage, and it's a cul-de-sac on both Treppet and Sylvage. We have no through streets. We have, I moved there 18 years ago, and literally, my children were pretty much the only ones on the bus stop, because the people have lived there forever. Now, we are multiplied with children. It's basketball hoops, scooters, bikes. I don't think an assistant living, it's actually called assisting living center, which makes me wonder if that is actually a facility for elderly, or if she's looking for a facility for rehab, which really makes you wonder when you have children that are all through this neighborhood, running, playing. I'm hoping that with David Marks, he also opposes 5145, so, and he wasn't even advised that this was happening when we brought it to his attention. He found out last fall. So I'm hoping that the committee will take this into consideration. Our neighborhood, it's a wonderful neighborhood with beautiful children running everywhere, and this is just going to be so congested. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, Ms. Bensley.
Daniel, Daniel Williams, followed by Andy Dudak and Emery Knowles.
Hi, members of the planning council. Thank you for, thank you for having us tonight. My name is Daniel Williams. I am a resident of Forge Reserve. I am here to speak in adamant opposition of issue 5-021. It's nice to speak from Perry Hall High School. This is the school my 16-year-old daughter would be going to right now, and most of the children of my neighbors as well, if there weren't already such an overcrowding problem here within Perry Hall, which is why I'm so against 5021. In my neighborhood, it's a small neighborhood of 29 houses. It's being petitioned to be rezoned to drop 32 high-density living units within the confines of my neighborhood. So imagine that, turning a neighborhood of 29 homes into a neighborhood of about 60 or so, 61 homes. It's ridiculous, and anybody who would support this, I think, would be out of their mind. And I question the people who want to develop this, if they're in their right minds. I am strongly in favor of 5002, the downzoning of that very parcel to DR-1H. Lastly, I want to speak out in support, strong support of 5-098. These are the woodlands behind Forge Reserve. BGE has been talking over the last six or seven years about plowing down all of those woods to put a service station for their Baltimore County fleet. If you can imagine us living in that neighborhood for the past 13 to 14 years, suddenly having those woods mowed down so that a fleet station can be built with parking lots and fumes and noise, and the existence of our well-established peaceful lives basically just cast aside as if none of that ever mattered. So thank you for your time. I appreciate your patience.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker.
Speaker 30, Andy Dudak, followed by Emery Knowles, and then Lynn Zink.
Speakers, when you hear your name, please come forward.
My name is Andy Dudak, and I have lived in White Marsh for over 40 years. I am here tonight to speak about property number 5-063 and support a change. Currently, the zoning for this property allows for a funeral home and crematorium. A funeral home at that location would create a number of problems, but I am totally against a crematorium with all its horrible effects in an area in close proximity to residential homes, restaurants, businesses, and daycares. This would be a disaster for all concerned in this community. Myself and the community at large is requesting this property be rezoned to CB or a lesser zoning that would be in step in harmony with the community it would serve and would remove and preclude its use for a funeral home and crematorium. I also want to speak on property 5-101, and I... And I am in support of change. I would like to see this small church that surrounds our homes continue as a small church in unison and continuity of our neighborhood. But I am requesting the zoning of this property changed from DR 2 to DR 1, which would limit the number of homes that can be built if the property is developed for residential use. This would be consistent with our neighborhood, keeping intact with our rural character and aesthetically preserving our area. Thank you.
Thank you sir. Next speaker.
Emery Knowles, followed by Lynn Zink and then Mark Moore.
Good evening, my name is Emery Knowles, I'm here on issue 5-068. I and my family have lived in the Golden Tree community for over 30 years. I've spoken with many in the communities of Golden Tree and Arrow Acres and all are strong, I and all are strongly opposed to building single-family or duplex homes on this green space. The following are some key issues. The field, the two baseball fields, the basketball court are used extensively throughout the year, weather permitting, by Orem's Elementary School for daily recess and athletic activities. The field serves as community green space and is used recreationally for many sports and family activities. The area is habitat to many species of animals and serves as a migratory and feeding stop for several species of birds each fall and spring. The area is home to endangered species of bats and bees, both of which are vital for plant pollination and bats control our ongoing mosquito populations. The end of the property adjacent to Orem's Road is wetlands which must be protected and preserved. Any development consideration must have a comprehensive biological and ecological assessment completed to protect existing and endangered species in the Chesapeake Bay. Our quality of life would be adversely affected due to chemical noise and light pollution, excessive traffic on roadways near and at the school and we as residents will likely suffer loss in property values. Lastly, I've submitted for each of you a detailed analysis of each of these points. I would be more than happy to discuss those with any of you. I am a professional microbiologist and environmental health and safety professional, so you have my phone number and everything else. Thank you for your time.
Thank you sir.
Lynn, please refrain, thank you. Lynn Zink, followed by Mark Moore and then Charles Kennedy.
Good evening. I am Lynn Zink and I'm speaking on behalf of the entire Zink family. We are opposed to the zoning change request for 5-038. And although this zoning change does not currently affect our family farm, it does affect some of the local landowners that we have spoken with and the words that I'm about to speak resonate with them as well. Some of the effects of this proposed zoning change, first of all, the private landowners, they're going to experience a loss in their property value. Will they be compensated for this loss? Also, by making larger tracts of land within this change, who's going to be able to afford to purchase land there now? Is it only gonna be for the elite? And Kingsville, it would be an out of reach for many people. And then young families who want to move to a rural area, we're going to be pricing them out of moving into this area. And also, there are large families who have been working these family farms for years that have dreams down the road when they're ready to slow down and not have to farm the land anymore, that there are family members who have been working the farm all these years, they're not going to be able to subdivide so that they can live on their own family farm that they've worked on for years. It's going to be, have a big impact on these families. So we want to thank you so much for hearing us and to understand that this green space idea, it could end up having an opposite effect of what they're proposing and what is intended. Property owners could end up maybe finding non-residential uses or they could quickly subdivide and get the money while they can. So we want to thank you for your time and consideration with the proposed information that I did submit, the copies. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Mark Moore, followed by Charles Kennedy and then Howard Simmons.
Good evening, I'm Mark Moore, I'm the Vice President of the Citizens to Preserve Perry Hall Manor. I'm here speaking for 5-045 for the Perry Hall Mansion. Perry Hall Mansion is located in the center of our small community, the Perry Hall Manor. Our community is interested in the future of the mansion property. We would like to partner with the county and the potential buyer of the property. We've compiled a list, which I have here and have made copies, I can drop them off in the back, of conversation points that we would like to have with those parties. Currently, the property per this request was DR 1 to DR 1. We are in support of it not changing as it's stated. And again, we want to have a quality conversation with the two potential parties, the county and the potential buyer on the way forward before any considerations of the county submitting a request for a change in this process over the next couple of weeks or months, as well as decisions for that. Initially, it was said that it was going to be a B&amp;B and then may also possibly used as a venue for weddings and parties. Since it is in the middle of our community, again, we want to be active members of that decision-making process there. We don't want to change the integrity of our community. We enjoy back there, it's a piece of Perry Hall we believe like no other community in Perry Hall or no other development. It is a way, we're rural today, we're on Wellon Septic, back to Gunpowder State Park, a quiet place, small winding roads to get back to there. Even the mansion property itself is a small access road, it's not even paved to get back to the mansion today. So to make this a commercial property, we want to be a part of that decision-making process.
Thank you sir. Next speaker please.
Charles Kennedy, followed by Howard Simmons and John Dubatz.
Yes, my name is Charles Kennedy. I've lived in the white, northern White Marsh area for over 20 years and I'm on, I'm for issue 5-063, turning into the property there into a community business CB property. One of the reasons being is that aesthetically, if anything else was there, it probably wouldn't look very good. Everything around there is small businesses, a small strip mall, it's only a two, Route 7 is only a two-lane road. And right now, we don't really have, you know, the traffic is getting worse and worse around there because of all the building. And like I said, it just, I think it just should put up a small business or something there would fit and look like aesthetically pleasing. I also like to speak on against, against 5091 rezoning to ML. The reason being is that if it was resold, they'd have something even bigger there. And like I said, we just, you know, like I said, because of the roads around that area, I don't think it'd be fitting to have anything else but, you know. So that's all I have to say and thank you very much.
Thank you sir. Next speaker please.
Speaker 35, Howard Simmons, followed by John Dubatz and Matthew Amrin. Howard? No? Okay, moving on, we have John Dubatz. John?
So do we just have three speakers not?
Howard was not here, John was not here. Next up we have Matthew Amrin, Amrin?
He's coming up.
Okay, great. After Matthew, we'll have Lisa Stevenson, followed by Nadia Njerja.
Sure, go ahead.
Good evening, Members of the Board. I am Matt Amrin and I am here to talk about issue 5063. I am in support of downgrading it to a CB property. I'm one of the representatives tonight that is geographically adjacent to the land that is slated for the Evans Funeral Home and potential crematorium. I am a board member of the Honey Go Ridge HOA and my wife and I just moved to this community because we love this community. We love the wooded area that it's in right now and I can say with strong conviction that we, and my friends, as a community, are strong advocates of issue 5063. We are asking that the zone be downzoned to a CB property as this fits the community better. We feel the congestion of Philadelphia Road and are seeing the byproducts of overcrowding in our community. We look forward to continuing the discussion of downzoning this property and seeing this zone become a business that makes White Marsh a community to continually be proud of. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Lisa Stevenson, followed by Nadia Enora and Adam Ferguson.
Good evening, my name is Lisa Stevenson. I'm speaking on issue number 5-033. Thank you for the opportunity to speak about this issue regarding my father, David Sadler's property located at 9801 Sadler Lane. 98, 0, 9801 Sadler Lane is similar in acreage to numerous other properties to both, on both Sadler Lane and the Connecting Tree Schroeder Avenue, but only 9801 Sadler Lane was selected to have a zoning change. The justification given was downzoning concerning, concerns with school and infrastructure capacity. However, listed as issue 5-021, a 2.9 acre piece of property located behind the Shell Station and produce stand on Bella Road, less than five minutes away from my father's property, is proposed to be changed from DR 35 to DR 16 to allow townhomes to be built. One would think that infrastructure capacity would be a concern here as well, but it does not appear to be the case. Although I was informed by Councilman Marks and Planning Member, Ms. German, thank you, that this proposed zoning change to 9801 Sadler Lane was done in error, I wanted to make it clear that this proposed zoning change is contested by the property owner, my father, David Sadler. I have supplied copies of the emails I received where the Councilman and Ms. German both state that the zoning for 9801 Sadler Lane should not be changed. There are no plans to build additional residences on the property. However, I hereby respectfully request that the Planning Board recommend no change to the zoning of 9801 Sadler Lane.
Thank you. Next speaker please.
Speaker 40, Nadia Njerja, followed by Adam Ferguson and Caroline Artley.
Good evening everyone, my name is Nadia Enora, I'm living in Honey Go Ridge for 20 years. All members of my family and all my neighbors are in favor of changing zoning to 5063 CB. And none of us want any crematorium in our residential area because it's very dangerous. We've, all of us heard that air pollution is very bad for, for our health. I've heard it on, on the radio on CCB last year, very interesting statistics, that chemicals emitted from any crematorium, they creating cancer, they're very dangerous. Air pollution takes two, three years of the life expectancy of a healthy person. And it makes more damage to the health of old people or children or sick people. So it's, it's very sad and impact of the air pollution is much worse than that of AIDS. That's why we all strongly opposed to any crematorium in our residential area. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker please.
Next up we have Adam Ferguson, followed by Caroline Artley and Christine McLeod. Adam? No, Adam? Okay, moving on, Caroline Artley. After Caroline, we will have Christine McLeod, followed by Rodney Johnson.
Thank you. I was just putting finishing touches, so I hope I get it all out. I'm here regarding issue 5-045, which is the rezoning of Perry Hall Mansion. It's hard for me to say whether I oppose or support because I have more questions than answers about what this change could do to the preservation of Perry Hall Mansion and the surrounding community. I'm concerned about the effect that a zoning change will have, therefore I want to express the following. I oppose any zoning change that would alter the mansion's involvement in the historic preservation easement or that would remove the requirement of future owners to obtain permission for changes. I oppose any zoning change that would invite large gatherings such as weddings and other events. I really don't want to hear the latest DJ playlists and local bands from inside my house every single weekend. I have a long list of questions and concerns that I'd like to discuss with the county and the buyer before I can make an informed decision on this proposed change. Therefore, I guess if I have to oppose it in order to get those, that conversation to happen, then so be it.
Thank you. Next speaker please.
Christine McLeod, followed by Rodney Johnson and Hope Heard.
Good evening, my name is Christine McLeod and I am here to speak about 5-145. I am very concerned about having the zoning changed to have an assisted living facility, center, program or whatever it is in the neighborhood. There are many children that stand right on that corner who catch a bus. The bus already has great difficulty turning around. We have two cul-de-sacs with Treppet and, Treppage and Silvage Road and it is deep into a neighborhood, it is not conducive for walking for people who might be in a program, who might want to go outside. I do question what an assisted living facility is. Having done housing and special needs housing in New York and New Jersey for over 30 years, I regret that Ms. McKenzie has not really shared any information about what this facility will be. But we do have great concerns that in this residential area, that all of a sudden this is popping up. Thank you.
Thank you.
Rodney Johnson, followed by Hope Heard and then Rachel Ullman.
Question 5, 145, 4026 Silvage. I moved into this neighborhood when it was brand new in 1978, 46 years ago. It's been residential since then and what, one of the main things we're concerned about is if you put something in there that's commercial, what else are you going to put in there that's We'd like to keep it zoned residential. The intersection where this house is located is a Y. And back in the early 80s, we fought Baltimore County about getting a school bus back there. And they, at first they said it wasn't safe enough because the streets were too small. They finally decided that the bus stop would be at Treppet and Silvage, which is where this house is located. Kids go to elementary, middle and senior high school there at Perry Hall. They also go to Perry Hall Christian, there's no bus provided for Perry Hall Christian. The kids have to walk there, which they have to walk up and cross Calston. The, the bus stop is what they call a three-point turn. They pull into the street, they started pulling into Silvage and pull into Treppet and then they back up like three times, I guess, and then they turn around. That's how they turn around to get back there. There's kids, there's people that walk up and down the street, walk, there's three young, young ladies that work at Rosedale Federal that walk back there every day for their lunchtime walk. There's, on Silvage, there's five basketball, not courts, but the portable baskets where the kids play. And like other people have said, they, they ride scooters, they, I mean, they do everything back there. People walk their dogs.
Thank you sir. Thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you.
Next up we have Speaker 45, Hope Heard, followed by Rachel Ullman and then Mary Grizmore.
Hello, my name is Hope Heard and I am opposed to issue 5011, the property at 10245 Bird River Road, which is adjacent to my property. The owners of this property have operated a bus terminal at this location for many years. Ordinarily, this type of business is not permitted in BM zone property and residential Ordinarily, this type of business is not permitted in BM zone property in residential areas. In 1987, a special exception was granted to the owners, allowing them to operate this business. This exception covers all of the currently owned BM zone, and most importantly, it will convey to any additional property that receives the BM zoning. Thirty-seven years ago, when the exception was granted, there were 10 buses in operation. There are now more than 30. The owner is claiming that the increase in BM zoning is needed to bring the bus company in compliance with zoning regulations. I was, however, informed by the zoning department that an increase in BM zoning is not needed to bring the bus company into compliance. A simple reconfiguration of bus parking is all that is needed to achieve compliance with zoning. Rezoning, I believe, is not needed for compliance, but for expansion. As a nurse, my biggest concern is the potential impact on the health of myself and the surrounding neighbors. Ten of the buses are parked with exhaust pipes facing in the direction of my house. On school mornings, there is bus idling for the greater part of an hour. Even with today’s cleaner diesel technology, the exhaust fumes are so bad that I can never sleep with my windows open and need to limit my time outside during the idling time. I am sure that the fumes seep into the houses as well. According to both the EPA and MDE, exposure to diesel fumes can lead to serious health conditions, primarily affecting respiratory and cardiac systems. Children are particularly vulnerable to this exhaust. We have children living in close proximity to these fumes. It is my fear that adding additional property to the current BM zoned area will bring additional buses, which will mean more fumes, more noise, runoff, and the health and environmental consequences that come along with those.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Sorry, Madam Chair. Next up, we have Rachel Ullman, followed by Mary Grismore and Joshua Signs.
Hi, everyone. I’m Rachel Ullman. I live next to issue 5157, but I’m here in my capacity as a staffer for Delegate Kathy Schlega and Delegate Ryan Naraki. Delegate Naraki will be speaking later. I’m speaking on behalf of Delegate Schlega and going to read a letter that we submitted hard copies of. As Maryland State Delegates from District 7A, a significant portion of our district overlaps with Councilman district 5. We write today to support Councilman David Marks’s efforts to evaluate the zoning of properties in his district. We share his concerns regarding traffic, school overcrowding, and water and sewer infrastructure, amongst other things. We diligently work together to address some long-term problems. For example, no eastbound connection from Route 7 to Route 43 exists. Traffic congestion produces attacks on motorists, reducing time spent with families, causing people to be late to work. And it is reasonable to look at how much development can occur along corridors like this. Local residents, community associations, and public services, such as fire and police, have requested this eastbound access ramp. Unfortunately, there has been no progress to date. Councilman Marks has proposed classifying 3,343 acres as neighborhood commons or open space. This acreage is owned by state and local governments, HOAs, and other common ownership communities, and preserving the property would provide peace of mind to nearby residents. Councilman Marks has also proposed looking at the development potential of another 2,151 acres. We support a dialogue between property owners, community leaders, and other stakeholders about the best zoning designation for these lands. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Mary Grismore, followed by Joshua Signs and Julie Huminek. Joshua Signs? And then after Joshua, we’ll have Julie Huminek and Mike Chirico.
My name is Joshua Signs. I’m the Vice President of the Essex Middle River Civic Council. We are an umbrella group representing several community associations in the Essex Middle River area. Our President, Bob Benner, is not available this evening, has asked me to present our positions. Our organization filed issue 5-04 to downzone portions of the Lockheed Martin site. Our intention and desire is to avoid unnecessary and disruptive warehouse development in environmentally sensitive and historically significant areas. Most of the areas is requested to be placed in Resource Conservation Zones, RC 20 or RC 50, to protect the Chesapeake Bay and its tributaries. The historic Ball Field area has been identified for conservation and protection, consistent with the intent of RC 7, to protect and preserve valuable cultural, historical, recreational, and environmental resources. The remaining portion, including the current LMC office building, is requested to be rezoned to O2, as it is anticipated to become the new home of the then El Martin Maryland Aviation Museum. The EMRCC also wishes to recommend that there be no change to the existing zoning, RC 8, at the Lafarge site. The quarry is in the reclamation process under state direction and is still being filled. Additionally, the site’s future use will be considered as part of the Middle River Small Area Plan outlined in the 2030 master plan. The MRCC believes the current zoning is appropriate at this time. I also wanted to say to you, Madam Chair, you keep asking people to say if they’re opposed or unopposed, but a lot of these issues do not have a zoning change on them. So it’s imperative they say what their zoning issue is, otherwise, there’s no change on it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Julie Huminek. After Julie will be Mike Chirico and Lori Jones.
Good evening. My name is Julie Huminek, and I’m speaking on behalf of Gers Avenue residents and are united and opposed to issue 5-024 zoning requests, and we ask not to change the zoning from DR 1 to DR 5, keeping the houses, one house per acre instead of five per acre. Over the past year, Gers Avenue residents met with Joe Moran, Perry Hall Improvement Association, and County Councilman David Marks. We have full support of Perry Hall Improvement Association and Councilman Marks, who even stated that if the residents do not agree with this, he would stand by us and he would not let this go forward. So our concerns are the neighborhood overcrowding, increase to the existing high traffic volume, overall community impact, and lastly, Perry Hall does not need another 55-plus senior community area. Gers Avenue is a one-lane deteriorating rural road that’s only a half a mile long. It’s lined with older trees, fallen branches, low-hanging live power lines. We have no sidewalks, putting pedestrians at risk, no streetlights, and so it’s difficult to see at night with the road, people, and wildlife. The posted speed limit is 25, but it’s ignored by non-residents, especially the parents of Perry Hall, where they turn it into a raceway Monday through Friday between 7:00 and 8:00 a.m., keeping us in our own driveways where we can’t even get out. There are no pull-offs for cars to pass each other, no turning around areas for large vehicles, so they back down the street all the way to Silver Spring. Currently, there are 38 single-family homes who all signed the petition that we presented tonight, and they’re here tonight because it matters. On Gers Avenue, there’s also two occupied state care homes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Mike Chirico. After Mike will be Lori Jones and Denise Burkhardt.
My name is Mike Chirico, and I oppose issue 5-145, the rezoning of 4026 Silvage Road. First, the property in question was built as a single-family residence with three beds and two baths. There has not been construction done to convert this space into separate living areas, as it was only recently purchased from the original owner’s estate. Currently, the house is occupied by the applicant and her child, which would take away one to two bedrooms, the three total, and one of the two total bathrooms from any potential tenants. Additionally, I suspect the substantial renovations will be required in order for bedrooms, bathrooms, and house entrances and exits to be handicap accessible. Heating and electric will also have to be addressed, since our houses are not equipped for multiple separate tenants, nor commercial appliances and infrastructure. Aside from the sheer amount of work that would be needed to mutate the property, which won’t just be security hardware, into something masquerading as an assisted living facility, it would also take substantial monetary investment. Based off of publicly available information, the property owner took out a $340,000 loan to assist in paying the $351,000 cost of the property. This occurred around May 2023. The lowest average interest rate in that month was 6.35%, according to a Freddie Mac survey. This puts the homeowner’s monthly mortgage payment before any escrow or other bills at an estimated $2,100. I bring this figure up because additional loans will be needed to pay for the aforementioned construction, as well as business certifications, training, employee payroll, insurance, and equipment, all for one to two paying tenants that will share in a bathroom. The property owner will likely need to either charge premium rates just to break even or cut corners and provide subpar negligent care. There are at least five other established care facilities in the area, so I have to wonder what would ever draw residents to this potential business. One of my fears as a neighbor is that if this rezoning proposal is approved, then the business has a very high likelihood of failure, and that could lead to the property in foreclosure and become derelict. Other speakers have already brought up road degradation and increased traffic concerns by share their concern as well. So in closing, this proposal is at best misguided and at worst a blatant cash grab. When deciding on whether to rezonate a property from its historically intended usage, you have to ask yourself, what benefit does this change bring to the local community?
Thank you, sir.
The answer is nothing.
And for clarity, if something is existing, say an R2, and then the requested is an R2, so there was no change, you can just say, “I support it,” if there’s no change. You support the no change. Next speaker, please.
Next up, we have Speaker number 51, Lori Jones, followed by Denise Burkhardt and Lindsay Krone.
Hi, I’m Lori Jones, and I’m speaking for my dad. We’ve lived in that next door neighbor to Ms. McKenzie, who just purchased the residence in June for 47 years. And I have to say, she basically bought the home for that reason, to open it up as a facility. She spent, I think, $51,000 more than the asking price, and she thought that with it being on the Y, that it was a great area. The reason why we found this was because she already put in for a parking variance with Baltimore County Court, and that’s where we were fighting it from the beginning. And David Marks then put this issue, which is 5145, which I’m opposed to the assisted living facility being developed in that home. And so she is looking to make changes to the parking, which is already a mess with the buses and the traffic and people that have, we have a two-car parking pad, and with other people that have cars that are out on the road parking. And if we had more traffic, more visitors, it just is not feasible in that neighborhood. And the other part of this is, on Calston, there is, there’s no sidewalks. So, and there’s a big hill that leads up to this development, and so when you’re driving and you can’t see over the hill, it brings safety concerns for the residents of that neighborhood. And then people that are walking on that street, you know, it’s not that much traffic, but there is traffic now, but if she does the assisted living, we’re going to have ambulances, we’re going to have delivery trucks, we’re going to have visitors, so then there is going to be a lot more traffic. And there’s elderly that go with their wheelchairs and they’re walkers that take exercise on that road.
Thank you.
Denise Burkhardt, followed by Lindsay Krone and Mary Muth.
Hello, my name is Denise Burkhardt. I’m here for 5045. I live in a house at a Butts, it’s a Perry Hall mansion, so I’m very vested in what happens with it. So I would like to know if we have, will we be included with respect to information and decision-making that’s going to happen with the mansion? There’s an access road behind Perry Hall Road that goes up to the mansion. I would like to know if that’s going to be used, because that’s in my backyard. My concerns are also noise, traffic, parking, lights, and the historical part of the mansion, if it will stay that way. Thank you for your time.
Lindsay Krone, followed by Mary Muth and Gary Hutner.
Good evening. My name is Lindsay, and I am a resident of Oliver Beach. I stand before you today to express my support for the 147 zoning proposals that Councilman Marks has diligently filed for our district. This collaborative effort of Councilman Marks and community representatives have resulted in a thorough and thoughtful review of each plot of land. It is essential to recognize that this is not an attempt to transform every existing open space into green space, although such a vision would be remarkable. Instead, these proposals represent a measured move to ensure that future development aligns seamlessly with the unique needs of our surrounding communities. Take, for instance, the case of a property in Oliver Beach that is currently zoned DR 5.5. Initially, I felt disappointed that its status remained unchanged, so as I had presumed that every parcel would undergo downzoning. However, upon closer consideration, it becomes apparent that maintaining the zoning is a fair decision. This property is the largest undeveloped lot in our community with one house and four acres. However, most of the homes in Oliver Beach sit on less than a quarter of an acre. Allowing this property to continue is a just and equitable approach. While I wholeheartedly support the downzoning of properties, I believe it’s crucial to clarify that density itself is not inherently problematic. Density serves as a countermeasure to urban sprawl, and while sprawl may offer beautiful landscapes to some, density is a critical player in reducing pollution and fostering improved amenities and resources. It’s imperative that we approach development with thoughtfulness, focusing on areas that have already undergone intense development. However, we need to improve and expand emergency services, hospitals, schools, transportation, parks, and amenities in those areas. I extend my gratitude for your time and consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Mary Muth, followed by Gary Hutner and Pat Keller.
Hi, good evening. I’m Mary Muth. I’m a resident of Bowley’s Quarters, particularly Clark’s Point Road. I’m here in support of 5-184, downzoning to NC, Neighborhood Commons. I believe this is very important for the protection of natural resources, our wetlands, our animals, and our water, as this provides a filter for runoff to run through those wetlands in its way to Seneca Creek and then ultimately Chesapeake Bay. So I thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, Speaker 55, Gary Hutner, followed by Pat Keller and John Olson.
Good evening. I’d like to speak to issue 5-101, which pertains to the property at 5700 Ranely Road, which is an existing small community church that has been there since 1947. And the proposed change is for commercial development. This is in a small residential quiet area, and I believe commercial development would hurt the community very much. So we are opposed to 5-101. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker, please.
Pat Keller, followed by John Olson and Brian Murphy.
Madam Chair, members of the Planning Board, good evening. My name is Pat Keller. I’m President of the Perry Hall Improvement Association. We have 51 zoning issues within the confines of our area. In September, we convened an advisory group, a committee, to study the zoning issues and make recommendations. In December, that group started their work. In January, mid-January, the recommendations were finalized. On January 24th, we held a public hearing to invite the community to come and look at the issues and make comments on them. On February 8th, the Perry Hall Improvement Association voted on those zoning issues and made recommendations, and we will be sending you all a copy of those 51 recommendations and the reasons why we came to our conclusions. One shout-out to Ainsley Pressle. She’s been very good with our group. She’s made time to come out and speak with us and help us through the process, so I’d like to just do a shout-out for her. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
John Olson, followed by Brian Murphy and Lawrence Ames.
Hello, I’m John Olson. I’m here for bill 5-38. I’m vehemently opposed to it, and I am in agreeance with Mrs. Zink. The zoning change directly affects me. From changing from the RC 7 to the RC 5, it limits my ability to build From changing from the RC7 to the RC5, it limits my ability to build on two of my lots that are already residential, buildable lots. The setbacks cause the difference in there. My house and my properties have been zoned residential for 150 years, and the lots have remained residential, and I've paid the taxes on residential lots all that time. We're not asking to build a community, we're only asking to maintain the ability to build one house on each of our two and a half and three and a half acre lots. They're buildable lots now. We're currently boarding Franklinville with C5, RC5 zoning now. We're in the middle of mainly rural and farmlands, so we're one of the few properties that are affected by this. The RC7 is a blanket thing in our community, but it really, it only affects me and maybe another couple of people that are living there and have been living there for 20-some years. So, they're doing the blanket approach, and it should be an individual approach. I mean, I've paid those taxes, and the economic impact on me, if I wanted to sell those lots, would be huge. Because if you want to sell the farming lots, they're way more reduced than what a residential building lot is. So, I mean, and also, I don't have the ability to change, to even have my children build one of those lots and keep them in a beautiful community and raise our children there.
Thank you, sir.
Brian Murphy, followed by Lawrence Ames and Robert Swiderski.
Good evening, Planning Board, my name's Brian Murphy, addressing the issue number 5-38. I agree with the previous speakers on 5-38, we are not in favor of the zoning redesignation. Just over two years ago, my wife and I bought a house on Sherwood, we love the community, we want to see Kingsville and Upper Falls area preserved, we enjoy the status quo. As new homeowners, and relatively speaking, we're a younger couple, we have concerns about the implications that the requested zoning reclassification may have on our property. To this point, the county and other stakeholders have failed to provide reasoning for the justification for the specific change. I'm going to assume it's urban sprawling, that is driving the zone reclassification. But I'm requesting that the Planning Board and all other stakeholders provide a clear and concise intent for the reason for this change. Since we've been living there, we've noticed that there has been some urban sprawling occurring in the Kingsville area, mostly in Sicilian Court and northwest side of Franklinville Road. The current zoning reclassification addresses these areas that hasn't been urban sprawling. So from our perspective, it's other people causing the harm, but you're taking it out on us. Referring to Master Plan 2030, if you take a look at the Growth Framework, section page 5 of 17, GF.5 Rural Residential, there's a map that clearly shows that the current area is RC. And for me, the way I interpret that, that RC5 suffices the county's plan for 2030 remaining as RC5. I have submitted a longer version of this via email, I hope to hear back soon. Thanks.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Lawrence Ames, followed by Robert Swiderski and Paul Dembrowski Jr.
Good evening. First, I want to say thank you to all of you for what you do, your diligence, it is appreciated. Next, I'd like to speak to... I'm sorry, my name is Lawrence Ames, and I support the issue of 5-130, to keep the space as is with no further development. It's located in Hawkins Manor at Long Manor Drive and Marshgate Road, which is somewhat adjacent to 9700 block of Bird River Road. I've been a resident there since the beginning of the development, when it was new, seven years ago, and it has a green space that is approximately an acre, .77. And I welcome any additional protection that such an issue would bring. Children play there, it is also a nice park area that neighbors walk and play with their dogs. It's quite a peaceful neighborhood, and I want to keep it that way. And I thank you for your efforts.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Next up, we have Speaker 60, Robert Swiderski, followed by Paul Dembrowski Jr. and Alan Robertson.
Good evening. My name is Bob Swiderski, and I live in the Perry Hall Manor community. The Perry Hall Mansion, issue 5-045, is located in the heart of our peaceful neighborhood. I'm not familiar with zoning policies or the gamemanship. I was confused when I saw the Perry Hall Mansion was going to appear on the docket for a zoning change from DR1 to DR1. To be honest, I thought it was a typo. After talking with the Baltimore County representative, I now have a better understanding of why this approach was taken. By the county proposing the DR1 to DR1 zoning change, it enabled Baltimore County to place the Perry Hall Mansion on the docket this evening. Since Perry Hall docket is now part of the docket this evening, in September, when the council members have their September zoning meeting, the council board will be able to change the zoning of the mansion with no additional input from the community. To be honest, I hope my interpretation of this process is wrong. Why not have a meeting with our community proactively and share what your plans are for the mansion, instead of leaving us guessing? Now, we cannot only but be suspicious. It's understood Baltimore County has the right to sell the mansion, and someone has the right to purchase the mansion. However, the Perry Hall Manor neighborhood has the right to protect the integrity of our community. Tonight, the community provided Baltimore County representatives a list of the questions regarding the potential sale of the mansion, but share this information to demonstrate that our neighborhood is united and engaged regarding the future of the Perry Hall Mansion. Baltimore County, please partner with us. If you are a potential buyer of the mansion, I would suggest you get a copy of this list of questions.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Paul Dembrowski Jr., followed by Alan Robertson and Carl Rosmark.
Paul couldn't be here this evening.
Thank you. Are you registered to speak, sir?
Yes, I'm Alan Robertson, I'm next.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Okay, perfect. After Alan, we'll have Carl Rosmark and then Marilyn Yerkes.
I'm Alan Robertson, representing the Bowley's Quarters Community Association. Our desire is to align like properties with similar zoning to what the adjacent ones have now. Two initiatives are included with multiple properties in question, which I'll list below, that we're suggesting the following changes. The first one is 051, and we want the BL change to RC5, that property has not been used for business for over a decade. Issue 089 is a condo group that has BMB, and that was given up in order to build the condos, and that BMB should be changed to RC5 to match the adjacent properties. Issue 070, Bowley's Quarters Road and Chestnut Road, has a business that is using office-only, but he has threatened to change that and put in noisy restaurants or entertainment centers if we don't agree to some of his changes. So we want this to be changed to RC5 to match the adjacent properties, and he'd be grandfathered in to keep the business that he has now as office space. The second initiative is to align other residential properties with the adjacent properties. The first one is issue 043, Three Bay Drive Properties shouldn't be RC5. It's the only one beyond the fire hall that has a DR designation on our entire peninsula, was just granted a few years ago, and was a big error for the community. Issue 050 is a wooded area, and it should go from DR3.5 to RC20. Issue 082 is DR3.5 and should go to RC20. That's the Bowley's Quarters Fire Department. It's a low-lying area tending to flood, and also has a wooded area that has a lot of wetlands. So that won't affect the fire department, but will save the community from future development.
Thank you, sir.
Next, we have Carl Rosmark, followed by Marilyn Yerkes and Ryan Narrocki.
Good evening, Planning Board, my name is Carl Rosmark. Myself and our family has been a resident of Bowley's Quarters for over 55 years. I'm here to speak on three issues. First is 5-004. I go with Councilman Marks' recommendation to designate that area within 300 feet adjacent to the tidal waters, RC20, helps protect the land around the water and provide a buffer for the runoff to the Chesapeake Bay. They made great improvements to it, hate to see it fall back to what it was previously. Second issue, 5-065, this property should have the NC designation assigned to any of the county-owned property, and remainder outside of the county-owned property become Lastly, 5-066, same thing, this property should have the NC designation assigned for the county-owned property, and anything else that's outside of that should remain DR1. Thank you.
Thank you.
Also, 5-087, waterfront should become BMB 3.72 and DR3.5 to RC5, become RC5. 5-088, west of Bowley's Quarters Road and Edwards Lane, 10.87 acres, it's DR3.5, it should be zoned to RC5, open land and woodlands adjacent to the waterfront property. And 5-115, intersection of Bowley's Quarters Road and new section down to Burke, one of the areas outside of the urtal, should be RC20, it's 21.79 acres. And lastly, 5-156, northeast of Edwards Lane, it's .39 BMB, .01 BL, mostly wooded land, outside of the urtal, on the waterfront should be changed to RC5. Thank you.
Next up, we have Marilyn Yerkes, followed by Ryan Narrocki and Mark Holtschneider. Marilyn? Moving on, Ryan? After Ryan, we'll have Mark Holtschneider and Josh Sharon.
Hey there, good evening, everybody. I'm Delegate Ryan Narrocki, I'm here tonight representing myself and Delegate Kathy Schleg. Unfortunately, she's tied up in Annapolis. Just want to say that we represent the majority of Council District 5 at the state level. We support Councilman Marks' efforts to evaluate zoning throughout our district. For too long in Baltimore County, the policy has been to build and then consider how to address adequate public facilities. We have overcrowded roads, schools that are overcrowded, poorly performing water and sewer infrastructure, including the Back River Waste Water Treatment Plant, which I hear about all the time in my committee. In addition, Maryland currently ranks 50th out of 50 states in ER wait times, with Franklin Square Hospital having some of the longest in the state. These are the reasons that we support Baltimore County creating an adequate public facilities ordinance. I sit on the Environment Transportation Committee and the Housing Subcommittee in Annapolis, so I'm deeply involved in these issues at the state level. In fact, I had the opportunity recently to pose some of these very same questions to Governor Moore about housing issues and land use issues. I fully support efforts to ensure that state and local government-owned land remains as open space, and we support Councilman Marks' efforts to guarantee that development is handled responsibly, to ensure that children have adequate classroom space, that road infrastructure exists, and that development fits with the character of the community, and that this adequate public facilities exist before development occurs, not after the fact. Thank you for your time, and I appreciate everything that you all are doing here tonight.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Speaker 66, Mark Holtschneider, followed by Josh Sharon and Patricia Payne. Mark? No? Josh? After Mark, we'll have Patricia Payne and Cynthia Elder.
Good evening, Board members, my name is Josh Sharon, I'm a civil engineer with MRA, speaking in support of issue 5-087, located at 3644 Hughes Lane in Bowley's Quarters. The current property owner has spent a significant amount of money on surveying, engineering, environmental testing, and more importantly, finishing a cleanup program under the direction of the Maryland Department of the Environment. Before he could even spend that money, he had to reacquire this property through a foreclosure process as the previous owner acted in bad faith and defaulted on his loan. Your owner then had to pay four years of back taxes and attorney fees to reacquire this property. Currently, drawings are to be submitted to the county and the state to rebuild the existing facility, including repair of the existing bulkhead. I ask for your support to keep the BMB zoning in place so the owner can finish what he has started. I am also speaking in support of issue 5-024. The concerns you have heard about tonight, we have been diligently working on for almost two years, and we aren't done yet, we know that. The facts are, one, age-restricted villas have very limited traffic generation; two, they have no impact on schools; three, they importantly allow parents to remain in the area while their kids grow, but they no longer have the same amount of home maintenance; four, we have heard from the community, and we have already reduced the number of units by the project by 30%; five, we've listened to the community leaders and now meet all the open space requirements for this project; six, most importantly, there is still a need for age-restricted product in Perry Hall. Frankly, all housing is a need right now in Baltimore County, but we know this use fits in all residential neighborhoods. I ask again for your support on this issue and to help the county meet the challenge of providing more housing for its citizens. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Patricia Payne, followed by Cynthia Elder and Hakim Tajani.
Good evening, everyone. I am here for issue number 5-092, which we are in support of if it remains as it is. I'm also in support of 5-072, 5-073, 5-185 if it is to be downsized. We are against, and some of the neighbors from the Benji's Gladway Road area, it's a neighborhood that has been, we're over 100 years old. My grandparents owned the land, the people on Gladway Road, their grandparents owned the land, their parents grew up, and then we, as the children of those same group of people, grew up there. It's an over 100-year-old neighborhood. We are opposed to 5-008, where they want to pull in warehouses, which will be right directly behind our property. One of the reasons is that we have not been adequately given information so that we can make a decision. Our property values are going to go down. There's another issue with the sanitation and pulling in a grinder system, which will decrease our property because we buy $60,000 possibly, because we won't be able to make any decisions until they make a decision about whether we're going to have to put the sewer system in. So until we get further information about that, we don't want 5-00 added at all until additional information is given to us so that we can make a reasonable decision about our land. If we have to do something, if it has to be sold or whatever we're going to do. The line item on that will be about $3,000 in addition to the $3,000, almost $3,000 that some of us are paying in taxes. So we ask for support, we support Senator Marks at this point.
Thank you.
Next, we have Cynthia Elder, followed by Hakim Tajani and Adam Baker.
Good evening. I'm going to tag off Patricia Payne. I am one of the residents that grew up in that area, and I have my parents, my aunts here who grew up in that area, they were born in that area. So 5-008, we are definitely opposed to. Our children and our children's children are now growing up there. Putting warehouses in there would be a major impact on their livelihood. When I grew up there, I could ride my bike anywhere, I knew I had to be in at sundown. These children will not have that opportunity. Right now, the children have to walk a half-mile, elementary school children, with no sidewalks to get to the bus stop. We have to transport them. And the people come through there... We have to transport them, and the people come through there like, excuse me, bats out of hell, because they don't care. The children have almost been hit several times. They've almost side-swiped our cars, we're sitting there waiting for them. So five zero zero eight, we are definitely opposed to, regardless as to how they rezone anything. Thank you.
Thank you.
Speaker seventy, Hakim Tajani. Hakim?
Nope.
Okay. Next up, we have Adam Baker, followed by Kathy Salaga.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the Planning Board. I'm Adam Baker with Rosenberg Martin Greenberg, here on behalf of some clients tonight to speak in opposition to the rezoning requested through issues five dash sixty-five, sixty-six, and one five nine. With regard to issues sixty-five and sixty-six, we represent the Sisterhood Agenda, a 501(c)(3) organization which provides education and support services for women and children who have experienced trauma. Over the past two years, they have actively pursued the necessary approvals to acquire and develop the properties, which is the subject of sixty-five and sixty-six, located on Earl's Road and Middle River. Their proposal is to develop the property with a housing development to provide housing and support services for women and children who have experienced trauma in Baltimore County. Without the zoning, the current zoning, the current DR five-five zoning, they cannot pursue the necessary approvals they need. And for this reason, we request that the Board vote to retain the existing zoning. With regard to issue one fifty-nine, we represent the Zaman Ihader Islamic Center, which owns the property at ninety-five fifty-two, excuse me, ninety-five twenty-two Burton Avenue. Current zoning of the property is DR three five. Their proposal is to establish a religious institution use on the site, a use which is permitted by right under the zoning. On their behalf, we filed a zoning petition with the Administrative Law Judge in Baltimore County and have a hearing scheduled in April. Although the use is permitted by right, we need some variance relief associated with the development. Again, since the use is permitted by right on site, we respectfully request that the existing DR three-five zoning be retained. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Kathy Salaga, but I understand she isn't here. Moving on, we have Jason Johnson, followed by Courtney Caligari and Adam Rosenblatt.
Good evening. I'm here in support of issue five dash zero zero two and five dash zero nine eight. I oppose issue five zero two one. My name is Jason Johnson, I live on Forge Road. I am speaking on behalf of Forge Reserve HOA. We are here in support of issue five zero zero two and five zero nine eight. We are in opposition to five zero two one. We are a small community near the intersection of Honeygo and Bella Road. We support DR one H zoning on any undeveloped land that Hill Management and BG currently owns. We have been inundated with development issues for the last seven years. This little area cannot support Hill Management's proposed rental townhomes or apartments built on the former Little Lancaster property. DR sixteen is not supported by any nearby zoning. The townhomes being built at Forge Road and Honeygo Boulevard were dumped via legislation and is not currently zoned for multifamily homes. Again, we request issue five dash zero zero two and five dash zero two one be zoned as DR one. BG plans to sell their property on Bella Road and bring unknown development to this parcel. We are asking any current DR one zoning remain so, and that any undeveloped property be zoned DR one. We specifically request that the BM one parcel be zoned as DR one H, like adjoining zones. This area is currently heavily wooded and should remain that way. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Courtney Caligari, followed by Adam Rosenblatt and Jana Leonard.
Good evening. I'm Courtney Caligari, speaking in support of issue five dash zero zero five. I represent my family, which owns the three houses that are a part of this issue along Philadelphia Road. My family also owns an eighty thousand square foot, already ML-zoned warehouse directly behind these three houses. We placed all three properties, which are adjacent to each other and front on Philadelphia Road, into the CZMP because we want the opportunity to improve them in a way that would be compatible with the neighborhood. At Councilman Marx's suggestion, we have reached out to the relevant community association and hope to have a dialogue with them in this regard. While we initially were thinking that the best outcome would be to expand the ML zone existing to the rear of these properties, we now appreciate that addressing each of the three properties separately is preferable. Our current proposal is to retain the residential zoning on a portion of the property and to rezone a portion to allow for an office use similar to other office buildings along this section of Philadelphia Road. I intend to relocate my commercial real estate management company to this location so I can better serve our tenants in the warehouse and other nearby properties I manage, which I believe has a positive impact on the community. My family is local to the area, and we are very involved in our local neighborhoods. We appreciate and are receptive to community input and want to redevelop these properties in a way that benefits the community at large. Thank you for your time, and we will submit written documents to the Planning Board supporting our testimony tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Speaker seventy-five, Adam Rosenblatt, followed by Jana Leonard and Michelle Dioust.
Good evening, members of the Board. My name is Adam Rosenblatt. I'm an attorney at Venable Law Firm, and I'm going to talk fast because I have three issues to discuss with you. The first is issue number nineteen, working with the owner in favor of the requested rezoning for a portion of the property to go to ML for the parking of commercial vehicles. You heard a lot of testimony about this issue early in the night. The rezoning issue is an opportunity to control the look and feel of the property, to clean up the site, and this is a prime issue for a covenant agreement with a compromise with the community. I am here in opposition to issue number four, that is the proposed downzoning of the Lockheed Martin property. Lockheed Martin is not asking for anything other than to be left alone with the industrial use of this property that has lasted a hundred years, and you heard tonight, there's a request to rezone portions of their property from the industrial zone to RC zoning. That is after Lockheed agreed to subdivide their property so they could dedicate a portion along the water to Baltimore County as a park, and after they broke ground on a very celebrated new tenant in Rocket Labs in the last couple months. Strongly disagree with any downzoning of that property. The last issue is number twenty-four. I am working with the owner and speaking in favor of the requested rezoning to DR five point five. You just heard excellent testimony from Josh Sharon, the engineer for the project, but we've significantly reduced the number of units from the sixties down to forty-five. We're providing a large central open space area on site. We're working on a solution to avoid the access issues. When you hear the opposition to this project, it's all about Gerst Avenue and the access issues, and we are working extremely hard on an alternative to the issues you heard about tonight. This is a perfect location for infill development and will provide much-needed housing for Baltimore County's aging population, so we request the rezoning. Thank you very much.
Jana Leonard, followed by Michelle Dioust and Mario Borgerding.
Hi, Jana Leonard. I am opposing issue five zero two six, Lafarge upgrading, upzoning, but also I'm speaking in general for all the area in the watershed of Bird River. For decades, I've been riding down that road, and just, it's a release. There's research that shows that these areas with the fields and the farms and the wildlife and all are calming, and that overdevelopment in places like White Marsh and the new green league developments and all are very, make people aggressive. So we need these areas to be preserved, not just for the people that live there, because there aren't that many people living there. It's open space, and what I'm asking is to consider every issue that we're talking about downzoning. Be perfect, it'd be wonderful. I understand that people have individual homes that might have reconsideration. In the last couple of years, just on the Campbell Boulevard and the White Marsh Boulevard, we've had like a thousand acres clear cut of trees. That's, excuse me, acres, that's like a hundred thousand trees, that's a million pounds of oxygen we've lost in that area. The river's dying, Bird River's dying, they just dug out all the silt, they dumped it somewhere on a Maryland property. Every morning, you can see six, seven eagles flying around over the river into certain areas. We mark spring by not the crocus is coming up, but when the osprey come back to that area. We need to preserve this land, we need the trees in that area to preserve the health of the river, the wildlife, and a lot of people use that, the parks down at the end of Ebenezer Road. So just appreciate it, Mr. Marx, Mr. Naraki, just what you guys did and giving us the hope, the hope, that opportunity, while you two guys are so strong in support, that we might be able to save this very precious land. Thank you.
Michelle Dioust, followed by Mario Borgerding and David Kausch.
My grandmother, my grandmother used to call this her weapon. Good evening. My name is Michelle Daughn, and I'm speaking in opposition to zoning changes requested under CZMP issue five dash zero two five. For myself and Bob Curley, we live, have lived in the area that will be impacted by the requested zoning changes. Our residence is located at one one oh one oh Bowerman Road. It is apparent that the requested BMB zoning conflicts with the intent and requirements of Baltimore County zoning regulations, the Baltimore County urban rural demarcation designation of the rural and Chesapeake Bay critical area. I believe that because of the conflicts noted above and the impact a twenty-acre boatyard would have on this historically rural agricultural and residential area with the changes requested by issue five dash zero two five, and that it should be denied. The non-conforming existing marina, which occupies about three acres of land, can be brought into compliance by a much smaller, less invasive zoning change. I know that I'm going to be running out of time here. We will be submitting additional written documentation to all the Board members, we've done that this evening, and there will be some additional things. I thank you very much.
Thank you.
And the pronunciation is Daughn.
Daughn.
Daughn, silent O-U-S-T. Good evening.
Next up, we have Mario Borgerding, followed by David Kausch and Joyce Nie Miller.
Good evening. My name is Mario Borgerding, and I'm part of the Perry Hall Manor Board. This is in regards to issues five dash zero four five regarding the Perry Hall Mansion. I'm in full agreeance with the prior speakers, number thirty-three, forty-two, fifty-two, and sixty, and myself, seventy-nine, regarding five dash zero four five, basically to have no change to the DR one designation without some type of community involvement from politicians. The Perry Hall Manor is currently registered with the state as a Maryland Historical Trust, an MHT property. The historical property has existing land easements with the MHT. On December twenty-eighth, we had met with a respective or prospective buyer, a local individual who was considering the property, and I believe there are concessions to a RC seven or an RCC designation, which technically would be to protect historical low-density residential or bed and breakfast type of scenario. The cause for concern with our community would be the pending approval of possible liquor licenses, parking constraints, heightened sounds, larger gatherings, traffic, et cetera, for a very low-population area with DR one designation existing. So our community simply asks Baltimore County to keep residents abreast of the next steps and possibly consider an in-person meeting so that we can voice our opinions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Speaker eighty, David Kausch, followed by Joyce Nie Miller and Walter Strowinski.
I'd like to thank the Board for this opportunity. My name's Dave Kausch. I'm one of the Board Directors for the Bowerman Law &amp; Beach Community Association, and I want to address three zoning requests for five oh two five, five oh two six, five oh two eight. Given the fact that our small community has already been burdened by the environmental impact of the landfill, now we also have Plasky Crossing coming in, we implore the Board to consider as much open space and green space as possible. David Marx has been chivvying with us, we support the zoning changes. The only other thing I want to remind the Board of is we have a two-lane road coming into our community, and that two-lane road will be inundated with traffic if some of these lands are rezoned or allowed to develop. That's all I really have to say.
Thank you, sir.
Next up, we have Joyce Nie Miller, followed by Walter Strowinski and Mike Haley.
Good evening. My name is Joyce Nie Miller. I think it's a little high. Sorry. I'm at five oh two Fuselage Avenue, two one two twenty-one in Golden Tree Neighborhood. I'm speaking on the issue of five dash one fifty-one. I am in favor of downgrading the existing zoning from DR ten point five, DR five point five, to the DR one NC, which is the neighborhood commons. Hopefully, it'll stay as an open space. I've lived there for forty years. I would like to spend the next thirty years with the open space behind my house, I love it, and it's great to see. We have foxes, we have squirrels, we have rabbits, so there's a lot of actual habitat in that little area, and I would love to see it stay there. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Walter Stowinski, followed by Mike Haley and Joe Stallman.
Yes, good evening. My name is Walter Stowinski, and I am in favor of five oh three oh. My wife and I have been in Parkville for over fifty years. We own thirty-four eleven and thirty-four oh nine and a half East Joppa Road. I have a piece of property behind that, which is adjacent to both my properties, connects to both of them, and I'm looking to have that rezoned to BL and BM. Right now, the property is presently surrounded on three sides by fenced area, so I'm just looking to be able to use the back part of my lot. That's all I have. Thank you.
Next up, we have Mike Haley, followed by Joe Stallman and Matt Gardner.
Okay, my name's Mike Haley, and I'd like to thank the panel for the last two and a half hours, greatly appreciate your time and your patience and your attention. I know it gets difficult. And I'd also like to thank Councilman Marx for his steadfast leadership, and I'd like to recognize that this evening. I'm here for five dash one eight four to remain downgrade the neighborhood commons. It's, I believe that area is part of the Chesapeake Bay critical infrastructure and watershed, specifically Seneca Creek. It's currently wetlands. The area has lack of drainage, it floods routinely, it is a flood zone. The roads are deteriorating due to the excessive water and flooding. There's no sidewalks, so I would greatly appreciate your time and understanding with that, and I pass my time. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Ms. Ben Sliwett, Speaker, are we on?
Speaker number eighty-five, Joe Stallman.
Thank you.
After Joe, we will have Matt Gardner and Tina Benzeng.
I am Joe Stallman.
Hi, I'm Joe Stallman, also a resident of Clark's Point Road. I'm here for parcel 5-184. We are for the downzoning of that property because of exactly, I agree with Mr. Haley, we constantly flood out down there, and it's an issue all the time. We definitely don't need anything else to add to that, so I'm finished.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Matt Gardner, followed by Tina Benzeng and Gloria Kelly.
Hello, my name is Matt Gardner, and I support the downzoning of issue 5-184 and keeping that a neighborhood common area. I've owned property on Clark's Point Road for over 10 years now, and it's just been a fantastic community to live in, and the property's currently woods and wetlands and just like to keep it that way forever without any development. A request on that property would be to improve the current playground that's there, as the neighborhood children can play on, and a special request of that, as I feel that that community playground is a hazard at this point, it's just falling apart, my special request would be to potentially name that playground in my son's name, Joseph Allen Gardner, who passed away last year due to a genetic disorder, tries to be 18, and I'd be happy to donate and be involved with the rehabilitation of that playground. You guys have my contact information, so just feel free to contact me. Thank you.
Next up, we have Tina Benzeng, followed by Gloria Kelly and Elizabeth Rawl.
Good evening. My name is Tina Benzeng. I live at 3942 Schroeder Avenue. I'm here representing my property, my next-door neighbor in Adams Way. My neighbor being at 4008 and 98, or 4008 of Schroeder Avenue and 9809 Adams Way and some of the other neighbors. We're opposing the downgrade from DR2 to DR1. I've been there for 14 years and, nervous, I'm sorry, but I just want to let you know that we are opposed to any of the downzoom.
On what issue number, ma'am?
Oh, I'm sorry, 5-035.
Next up, we have Gloria Kelly, followed by Elizabeth Rawl and Thomas Selway.
Hi, my name is Gloria Kelly. I live on St. Thomas Drive off of Fitch Avenue, and I am here to oppose 4301 Fitch Avenue. The owner of the property has lived in Delta, Pennsylvania for over 40 years. The person that is requesting the zoning to DR16 from ML is a realtor. Now, if they were to put DR, and the other issue is, it's nine acres, and Herring Run Creek runs right through the middle of the property. So the other issue is, if they put DR16 in there, my family's been adjacent to this property for 200 years, and I think that, and the subsequent property out to Bel Air Road is DR35, and I think this would greatly reduce the price of the houses there, since most of the property, on St. Thomas Drive, mine included, is already on commercial property. Again, the owner lives in Delta, Pennsylvania for the last 40 years. The petitioner is the realtor, and I would like, and I think there's an old covenant on the property that was always supposed to stay ML. I'm strongly opposed to this, and the people in the neighborhood are, and putting houses right in the middle of, they would have four sides of commercial property, front, back, side, and both sides, and also there'd be a parking problem because there's tractor-trailers parked directly on that road all day long. So I'm opposed to 031, 531, 5031, and thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Elizabeth Rawl, followed by Thomas Selway and Sharon Jordan.
Hello, I'm Elizabeth Rawl, and I'm here on issue 5038, and I am opposed to changing from RC5 to RC7. My husband and I have owned a small 37-acre farm in Kingsville for 56 years. For 56 years, we've been good stewards of the land. We manage our forest, we manage our soil, we manage our water. We even put our home in historic preservation. It's an 18th-century home. We would just, at this stage in our lives, after all of these years of commitment, would like to keep it at RC5 and not have a change at this time.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Next up, we have Speaker 90, Thomas Selway, followed by Sharon Jordan and Trina Koch.
Yes, hello, I'm Thomas Selway. I have lived at 8805 Gerst Avenue, right over here by the high school track, for 66 years, and it's been a wonderful, wonderful neighborhood. I remember him building this school, but now they want to take Ms. Moore's property, the 10 acres, which is DR024, and build many, many townhouses. I brought a picture of the aerial photo of the neighborhood, which shows many, many single-family homes. I can visualize more family, single-family homes on that 10 acres, but that's the way it should be only. No, no, do not, do not change the zoning.
On what issue, sir? What issue?
Oh, the issue is 5024.
I'm sorry, say that again.
5024.
Thank you.
And like I said, just, it should, it should remain the same. Thank you.
Next up, we have Sharon Jordan, followed by Trina Koch and Scott McBride.
Thank you for your recognition. My name is Sharon Jordan, and I reside at 11206 La La Cane, 21128. I am opposed to issue 5-111. Our adjacent property was purchased 49 years ago and was previously zoned DR5.5 at the time of purchase in 1975. During the great honey-go White Marsh builders boom, our property zoning was decreased from DR5.5 to DR2.5, thereby allowing all the builders to benefit and prosper from all their numerous building developments in Perry Hall. Again, I am opposed to 5-111, as I fear this would set a precedent, a very strong precedent, for additional decreased zoning in the near future, especially for my property, along with my family's property that's adjacent to mine. Lastly, on another issue, I still do not understand why a continuous barrier wall was not constructed along the newly-added lanes of I-95 that are adjacent to our property. Instead, barrier walls were constructed all along northbound I-95, except along our property. With the newly-added traffic lanes, we, along with our neighbors, are continuously subject to the constant noise and unhealthy exhaust fumes from the 24-7 traffic occurring on I-95. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Trina Koch, followed by Scott McBride and Carrie Moore.
Good evening. My name is Katrina Koch of 11204 La La Cane. I am also representing my sister and brother tonight. We are opposed to 5-111, very strongly opposed to that. Our property was purchased in August of 1975 and zoned DR5.5. Several years later, in the late 80s, it was rezoned to 2.5. We took a major loss. But also, across the street from our property, and within a quarter of a mile of our property, Baltimore County rezoned down, so condominiums, townhouses, and single-family homes on less than a quarter of an acre. Our property still remains DR2.5. Now Baltimore County wants to decrease it again, which would be a great loss to us. As we all know, the big winner here is the developers. If this is rezoned down again, the small property owners that have had properties for 50 to 100 years, they're the losers. Again, I oppose 5-111. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Scott McBride, followed by Carrie Moore and Eric Enderas.
Thank you. My name is Scott McBride, and I'm here in support of issue 5-157. This is Jericho Farm, which represents my mother, my 92-year-old mother, Marie McBride, and my son, Christopher McBride. Our house is on the National Register of Historic Places, the only one in Kingsville, Jericho Farm. I came tonight because David Marx, I saw David Marx talking about our property on Facebook. I called him, and they said someone would get back to me, and over in a week's time, no one has. I found out tonight through my newest next-door neighbor what it was about. It's purely a political ploy, making us a political pawn. Our family bought Jericho Farm in 1905. We've done no development. We've planned no development, but we do want to maintain the property value and not have it taken away by politicians trying to make a case and make a name for themselves. This is purely political. Our house, our house is not, it's not a busy neighborhood. Our family came in the 1840s. They bought our property in 1905. By the end, by, as time went on, they helped found the Kingsville Bank. As time went on, also, the state of Maryland condemned 50 acres of our house, leaving us with only 50 left. They took half of our farm with very little communication for the state park. People say we, oh, it's so busy. We've got 18,000-acre gunpowder state park next to us, we've got a 300-acre conservation property from Helen Cat Pollard. We are not. The only house built in the last 50 years on that road is my son's house to help us take care of the property. We want to make that decision in the future of what kind of development or whatever, but we're not trying to make a large development. We just want to get a value out of our property. My mother's 92 years old, she's already complaining about the fact that we got a 30% increase in our assessment. Now you want to take away the rest of our land. Thank you. Thank you very much for being here.
Next up, we have Speaker number 94, Carrie Moore, followed by Eric Enderas and Robert Smith.
Good evening. My name is Carrie Moore. I am here today in direct opposition of number 5-025, the request for rezoning to, from RC to BMB. This property sits directly on the Bird River, and right now, it is affected by the Critical Bay Area and would directly affect my client's 2.78 acres, which is owned on Bird, excuse me, on Bowerman Road. This property to its direct left already has a marina that is somewhat dilapidated and basically turns into a boat graveyard. I do not believe that it would be doing any service to my client to have his home bordered by not one, but two marinas or business areas. He has four homes that were built on this property back in 1955, and he's owned it since 2011. His ideal was to sustain this property, to rehab it and to build it up and make it the waterfront property that it should be. However, over the years, he's been pushed back and denied the right to do anything with his property other than enjoy it. I do not believe the county or the board should entertain letting one single landowner who's trying to buy up all the properties around him to slide in and to throw another boat marina or a commercial space within a 500-foot area. Our 2.78 acres would be landlocked by this particular expansion if allowed, and again, we oppose this. Thank you.
Next up, we have Eric Enderas, followed by Robert Smith and John Larson.
Good evening, county representatives and local residents. My name is Eric Enderas, and I'm the vice president of the South Perry Hall Boulevard Improvement Association. As we've heard tonight, and will continue to hear, the topic of rezoning is filled with passion and emotion. Owners of land, both developed and undeveloped, express their right to sell or utilize, I wanted to say general comments, I'm sorry. Owners of the land, both developed and undeveloped, express the right to sell their and utilize their own parcels as they see fit and take great offense to limitations proposed and proposed changes. We understand and respect that passion, but ask the county zoning board to seriously consider future uncontrolled and unrestricted development. Since 2017, there have been significant plans already approved for developments in this area that will further stress the infrastructure of Baltimore County. The villages, Sears property at White Marsh, and the Avenue Apartments will be adding an additional 1,466 rowing units in the White Marsh area. The residents of these complexes will be adding a minimum of 5,864 daily trips, demand for education and emergency services, and basic necessities. At recent public hearings, the architects and developers have shown wonderful plans, but it has now become a joke because of the impact these projects place on the police, fire, EMS, and roadways. Education, hospital wait times are continually pushed aside, aside, and totally ignored. The ironic part is many of these developers have openly stated that they don't understand or experiencing these issues because they don't live here. The county has stated that they will continue and conduct impact studies, traffic studies, and such, but none have been produced or reviewed. Any studies of this are worthless without the actual existence of people. On July 21, 2020, an impact fee was established to help offset the impacts. To this point in time, there's been $0 funded. The fire department is putting equipment out of service every day, and the police department's operating between 152, 102 people. Thank you for your time.
But sir, you never said the issue number.
The issue number was just general comments in favor of downzoned properties.
Oh, general?
General, yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Next up, we have Robert Smith, followed by John Larson and Nayab Siddiki. Moving on, John Larson? No, John. Nayab Siddiki, followed by Wendy Friedlander and Charles Fitzgibbons.
Good evening. My name is Nayab Siddiki, and I own the property next to 11010, where you have this case 5025, and I'm here to oppose that because it does not make any sense to, if you take a look at that property, for it to be converted to a rezon where you can not only do marina stuff, but you also can have a 500-square-feet restaurant in there, you could have a repair shop. Which one of you would like to be living next door to a workshop or a repair shop? I mean, that property over there has been, it's a serene area, it is very quiet, it is a Chesapeake Bay critical area, so please, when you're making a decision, take a look at all those factors, because I don't think that's a very good idea at all. The question to ask is, why is somebody trying to convert that? What is the intention? What are they trying to achieve? And look at the number of acreages that they are trying to convert. Does it make any sense? Not to me. Thank you very much. So I oppose that 5025.
Thank you, sir.
Next up, we have Speaker number 99, Wendy Friedlander? Friedlander, followed by Charles Fitzgibbons and Marie Savage.
Good evening. My name is Wendy Friedlander, and I do support no change to zoning proposal 5-045. I would oppose any changes to the Perry Hall Mansion. I would oppose any changes to the Perry Hall mansion and surrounding undivisible property. I am a resident of Perry Hall Manor, and even though the mansion is in great disrepair, it is a historic fixture in our community and a beautiful property overlooking the Gunpowder State Park. I'd heard that the mansion was to be auctioned off, as is, with no public sewer and on four non-subdivisible acres. $250,000 would be given to the buyer to help with potential restoration. I am gravely concerned that the zoning could be changed by Councilman Marks, especially if there is a potential buyer. I am afraid that it could be removed from the historic registry and for a potential owner to subdivide the valuable land for new housing and the possibility that the mansion could even be torn down. Even though the mansion is in disrepair, I am asking for Councilman Marks and the board to allow this precious landmark built in the 1700s to remain finding, finding the buyer who would be willing to restore the mansion to its former glory. I am also very concerned about what Councilman Marks will do when the mansion gets public sewer, which will, which will mean it could be, it could, the property could be rezoned and developed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Charles Fitzgibbons. No, Charles. Moving on, Marie Savage. After Marie, we will have William Ball, followed by Wayne Savage.
Thank you, Marie Savage, in support of 5184 to downzone to NC. My husband Wayne Savage is here to consolidate time. He could probably just say ditto. We live on Clark's Point Road in Bullies Quarters. We support the protection of the woods, the wetlands, and the stream next to our home, and which is home to numerous wildlife, including nesting eagles. The sides of our home also serve as pathways for turtles, deer, and foxes. So we are kindly requesting that you preserve this wetlands for us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, we have William Ball. After William, we will have Wayne Savage and Karen Aquia.
My name is William Ball. I live at 1010 Hill Pine Road. I'm directly adjacent to a property being proposed for zoning changes. I am against issue 5008 and 5073 for many reasons. Reason one is that it is a, a small community that lacks the infrastructure for large commercial properties. Literally, if we're driving down the road and a UPS truck comes up the road, we have to pull into a neighbor's driveway simply to allow that UPS driver to drive by. Second, to improve and make planning properties for this large commercial properties, they want to slate every household with the cost of putting in infrastructures for these properties. I am part of that small community back there that had been in this same little area for about 100-plus years. I remember being in this area, talking to my grandmother while she's explaining to me how the trees that she planted and how they named the roads around the area. Now we have a development community that wants to come in and develop the area directly behind my house and put in warehouses, and then directly the area in front of my house and put in warehouses. These used to all be green spaces, which were all trees, deer, foxes, and all wildlife. I would go out and sit on my porch, have a nice drink, and look at all these trees. Now they're talking about changing all these trees to properties and community and saddle us with the cost of putting in infrastructures for these big businesses. Now, I don't know about the council here, but I don't think that's nice for the people that live there. I don't think that's good for the people that represented us to think that's a great idea for us, and I don't think that's a cost or something that we should deal with as a small community that's been here for hundreds of years. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Next up, we have Wayne Savage, followed by Karen Aquia and David Print.
Hi, I'm Wayne Savage, and I support 5-184. There are a lot of wildlife back there, and I don't want to see that land changed. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Next up, we have Karen Aquia, followed by David Print and Robert Eisbart.
Hello. My name is Karen Aquia. I live in the Forge Reserve community. We are opposed to 5-021. When my husband and I bought the home, we bought it per the development plan, not for this. This unfairly and negatively affects our property value and the safety of the children. We need less development, not more. The schools are overcrowded, as it is. We are in support of 5-098 and 5-002.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, we have speaker number 105, David Print. Moving on, we have Robert Eisbart. After Robert, we will have Zabada Nassim and Eileen Endrias.
I'm Robert Eisbart. I live on Larly Beach Road in White Marsh. I'm speaking in, to be opposed to 5025. I'm opposed to changing the zoning of this parcel from R20 to a business marina zoning. The parcel and all surrounding parcels are currently zoned R20. The parcel's currently used as a marina, and since it's been there for who knows how long, I don't, it's not really affected if the zoning isn't changed to, to marina zoning from R20. However, changing the zoning of this parcel could affect the use of the contiguous parcels that are R20 now. It'll affect the fragile waterfront area, it'll affect the community as a whole. The properties contiguous to this parcel are likely, or likely will be, under the control of the property owner who's looking to rezone the current property. And so this is no idle question as to whether or not the adjoining properties could turn into, in effect, a marina business property. The community that surrounds the property in question, as I say, is zoned R20 or R50 area. It's been that way for a long time. It's a unique residential area. My own house butts the Bird River in the backyard and the Gunpowder State Park in the front yard. The roads in the area, there's just single roads running through the area. They're narrow. There are no sidewalks. They run through a state parkland. These roads are not through roads. There's no sidewalk, as I said, and they're really not suitable for any additional development, especially a business development such as a marina business.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Nabada Nassim, followed by Eileen Endrias and Garrett Huffer.
Good evening. I'm representing, I came here regarding issue 5121. I actually drove all the way from New Jersey, so I hope this is not for no reason, but we want to keep the existing zoning, which I assume that's what's being suggested. I'm here representing my parents. They bought this property about four or five years ago under the impression that this was a DR 3.5, and if it were to be changed, it would actually cause them a lot of financial loss. So we're just requesting that it be kept at DR 3.5. The surrounding, it's surrounded by Campbell's Crossing, which is like a huge development, which is around like 6,000 square feet long, I think they have. So that's it. I know it's been a long night, so it'll be short. Thank you so much. Thank you for your time.
Next up, we have speaker 108, Eileen Endrias. Next up, we have Garrett Huffer. Moving on, we have Jeffrey O'Brien. After Jeffrey, we will have Wayne Mooney and Philip Tambarello.
Good evening. I'm Jeff O'Brien. I'm here regarding, oh my, 5-093. Corner of, southeast corner Hartford Road and Second Avenue, former CVS store. I'm here, I'm, I don't feel my neighbors have gotten a fair shake in this to even offer opinion as to whether zoning should remain the same or downgraded. The signage is pathetic. The zoning sign is pathetic. I made a request, I called in on February 8th, no response to the county. The sign, if you're coming off of Hartford Road on the Second Avenue, you got to watch out for being rear-ended. In order to even see the sign, it squats down like, it's like this to the ground, you literally have to get out in the intersection because it's right on the curb, the sign, and you have to squat down. It'd take an idiot to do that. I'm not an idiot. I don't know that any of my other neighbors bothered. They certainly can't see it from their car, coming from either direction. It's clever, the way it was placed, or, I mean, I'm not saying it's necessarily nefariously placed, but from the one direction, there's a light pole and an electrical switch box. You certainly can't see it from that direction. And as I say, from the other direction, it's down on the ground, inches from the curb, you have to literally get out in the middle of the intersection to see the sign. I feel like my neighbors have been disenfranchised here tonight, that they're not even aware of this. That being said, I am objectionable to anything that's going to bring the auto dealership that's on the Beltway, continues up Hartford Road. There's a property that burnt down here recently, another property that partially burnt down, and there's a CVS store. Anything that's going to bring a mega dealership to my doorstep or to the daycare center next door, I object to. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, we have speaker 111, Wayne Mooney. Wayne, not here. Next up, we have Philip Tambarello. Sharon Reed Burns. Samantha Campbell. Tabitha Bowerling. After Tabitha, we will have Deborah Tate and Bob Tanner.
Hi, thank you for your time. I oppose the 5159 zoning. That is a dead-end street off of Joppa Road, Burton Avenue, 20 houses, and they want to put a community center in one of the houses. That is three to four bedrooms. The community center has had a couple events there, and they, they park sardine parked in the front yard. They've, they've cemented the backyard so they can put a bunch of cars back there. My parents are both handicapped and need medical care. My dad is in a power wheelchair. There's no other street that a firefighter, policeman, ambulance can get on. And actually, the size of the road is not even wide enough sometime for a fire engine to even be able to turn around. You would have to turn around in a driveway or in someone's yard. And so the activities they have had at this house have blocked the road because they have so many people coming and so many people parked. It's a one-way street. It backs up to Oak Crest, and we would like to see it kept as a regular family community. It's not meant for a community center. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Deborah Tate.
My name is, my name is Deborah Tate. I oppose the issue 5-159. It's, I live at 9503 Burton Avenue, and this is 9522 Burton Avenue. It's a small house that they want to convert into a community center. In the past, when they've had activities at the house, it was very crowded, at least 50 people, tons of cars, and my husband is handicapped and needs medical care morning and night. And as the person that comes at night to help my husband, there were times where she could not get through and had to wait for someone to notice that they were blocking the road. She comes every night, and we've had to call 911 at times because of my husband's condition, and go, and it's a very narrow street. Two cars cannot pass on the street. You have to pull to the side to let another car by. The activities that they had during the summer were like two weeks straight, and they lasted past midnight. Lots of cars, lots of people, and it just, the road is, is not set up for that. So we are opposed to the zoning that would need to be changed for that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Bensley?
And our final speaker signed up is Bob Tanner, who I do not believe is here.
Well, thank you all for coming out tonight, your attendance and your cooperation. Your comments will be taken seriously along with your written testimony. Have a great evening and drive home safely. Thank you.